All right. Good evening, everyone. This is, today is Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, and you are here for the Norfolk Town and Norfolk Planning Board meeting. In accordance with Mass, in accordance with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, notice was previously provided on the Town website for today's Planning Board meeting, which is at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 1241 Liberty Lane. Alternate public access to this meeting has been provided via Zoom with the link on the Town's website. If you wish to join or call in, please visit the Town's website. So let's do a quick roll call of the board members here. So we do have one member remote, Chris Montfort. And in the room, we have Melissa Mayo, Gary Sullivan, myself, Chad Peck, Eric Diamond. That's our board, our town planner, Richard McCarthy, and our admin assistant, Betsy Fajol. We will do all votes via roll call because we do have one member via Zoom. So let's go ahead and get started with our 7 o'clock appointment, which is the Master Plan Steering Committee. This is meeting number eight. So I will pass the baton off to Josh. I see Josh is on Zoom. If you could introduce yourself and anybody else that is with the MAPC, that would be We can't hear him.
Oh, there it goes. Hold on one second, Josh. There we go.
What's that?
Yep. Okay, we're good. We're having just a little audio problem.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So Josh Vialla, Principal Planner at MAPC and Project Manager, co-project manager, I should say, for our Norfolk Master Plan effort. And I've just shared our screens, so you should be all seeing that now. I'm joined by two of my colleagues this evening, Travis Pollack and Gurdeep Kar, and we are going to walk through some strategies this evening. So I understand the board has an appointment at 8 o'clock, so we're going to try to be brief and give you an update of the progress first. But most of our time this evening, we're going to try to spend with the committee as a first part of going into strategies under four of the eight topics. And then we will reserve our time in the January meeting with the committee to discuss the second part of those strategies as well. So let me just do a brief recap of what things have, what items we have underway. So we have a few engagement touchpoints surrounding the draft vision statement and draft goals for the master plan, and we've gotten good engagement around those. And you can see sort of the three main channels there. We've been doing briefings and follow-up meetings. We've had a series of online feedback tools and showed up at some standing meetings of some committees and boards as well. This is a townwide mailer that went out. Thank you to the planning department and Richard McCarthy and others' efforts. And this has reached the town and hopefully is maybe meeting people in their mailbox who might not have heard about the planning process so far. So we hope to really expand the engagement in that way, and that's, so that's out there. We have the variety of ways people can continue to be involved and engaged with the current materials. The online open house has approaching 200 participants. The briefings with town boards and committees have, I think, been good and resulted in some good conversations with the Select Board, Conservation Commission, Advisory Committee as recently as last week, stopped in with the Norfolk Small Business Association, hosted a conversation with seniors at the Council on Aging, and then had a dinner, although I don't think our team actually ate the dinner, but did join the Norfolk Lions Club at a dinner for their, their membership group as well. We did want to make known and clear that all of these engagement channels will be wrapping up next week. We do have to kind of move on and compile all this feedback and learn lessons from it. So we're going to be closing these various survey forums on next Monday, December 18th, and that will give us time as a team to compile all the feedback from all the notes we've gathered, from the materials people have contributed to online. And Rich, I'll just, I'll shoot you an email, but we should gather any in physical copies of surveys too that might have been submitted. Those were available at Town Hall and I think the Town Library as well. So we'll be compiling, sorting, and analyzing that feedback, looking for themes in the feedback, and then revise accordingly the draft vision statement and draft goals based upon that input from the broader community. So our final push with you all on committee members and ambassadors who might be helping us, please do just continue to share the link with your networks. So final push, let people know that this is for at least this round of feedback, the sort of final week, to get that feedback in, and that it is an important part of the master plan content, both with vision statement and the goals. Any questions on that before we shift our time to the strategies?
Nope.
Great. It's, I think it's been a really good effort. We've reached kind of broadly and in different ways, and that's been, I think, a good, good compliment to the more intensive, sort of larger visioning forums and workshops we had in the first phase of our work together. So turning to the strategies, and this, this is exciting because this is a well-worn diagram at this point, but we have been working down this outline of content for the master plan. Of course, the vision statement and the topic goals are what we just described are drafted and out there for public feedback. Below that, in terms of its, the level of detail, is the strategies for each of the topics. And our team has been working internally with the draft topics as they're currently established. And we do, you know, the caveat there is we do understand that there will be some modification to the goals based upon the feedback we're receiving. But we think that there, we haven't heard or seen in the pattern of feedback so far or in any of the conversations we've been having, a really dramatic shift away from the goals which we have in each topic. There's some, I think, wordsmithing that can occur, some fixing up, maybe a goal that might get repositioned, but not an entire set of goals. And it might include, for example, adding a goal that was missed. Maybe there's some decent community coalescing around a type of topic that maybe wasn't covered in an area. So we're moving forward under the assumption that we can generally make those adaptations and move forward with strategies as well. So our team has had a work session internally. We've kind of produced strategies which can occur under each of the topic goals and then had a discussion as a team to see where there may be overlap or synergies, or how we could improve those goals collectively, I mean, the strategies, excuse me, collectively. And we are squarely, as we have been with the identification of the goals, in the portion of the work where we're really identifying solutions. And we're starting to dip a toe into that final big work area, which is providing a roadmap. And the strategies do start to get detailed enough where we really can start to see some notion of actions or the next steps for the town to be undertaking, and you'll see that in some of the ideas this evening. So with that, I think I'll turn to our, our team and myself included, and we'll kick us, kick us off with land use. And one of the things that is not unique to this master plan process, but we come across quite a bit, is that it is, it is difficult to cover comprehensively in these conversations together, the sort of breadth and depth of strategies across each of the topics. That's why in part, we broke it into the two meetings. But we also understand and just highlight that we're not going to be able to cover in detail all aspects of these strategies tonight together before 8 o'clock. And we invite the committee, I'll share this presentation just immediately as we conclude this evening, with the group via email. And you all are invited to take a more detailed look and respond to us via email, or if needed, we'd be happy to meet or have a phone call to talk about areas of either improvement or editing that you see as these start to take shape. So we can also, as we go through these, you can help direct us a little bit to see if there's a question or an area of interest, but we'll, we'll give a high-level overview as we walk through these. We have four topics to get through this evening: land use, economic development, transportation, and housing. And that's why Gurdeep and Travis are with us as well. So we'll start with land use. And you can start to see on the screen here, we've, we've tried to make these, at least for this evening, as sort of one line and succinct as possible because there's already a bunch of text on each slide, but hopefully there's enough information here to get the ideas across. So, for example, and I'll just maybe, I'll lead, just in terms of our team, I'll lead us through land use to start, and then I'll hand it off to Gurdeep for economic development and Travis for transportation. In terms of land use, thinking about the first goal of continuing to encourage community activity, development, infrastructure, and investment to Town Center. And of course, Town Center has been a big focus of a lot of the conversation we've had throughout this process. Some of the detailed strategies to do that are, I guess, in some ways, thankfully, items that the town has already been acting on. But continuing to explore wastewater solutions, that's critically important to support future growth of higher density and intensity of uses in the Town Center, that's, that's a major item that is there as a strategy, and then maybe will likely show up as a part of the action plan that we do in the next step too, just to see in what ways we can assist the town in continuing to develop that approach. Continuing to support property owners, making mixed-use investments, the town has done recent zoning changes to the Town Center, but that's a continuing conversation. I would say that oftentimes in these settings, the zoning is, has improved from where it was before. We haven't, we have yet to see a development proposal come forward, and I think that's a continuing conversation. Continuing to partner with organizations to expand community events in Town Center. Again, of course, there are events on Town Hill, in Town Center, there's a great calendar, particularly over the summer, but thinking about ways that that could, that roster of events could be expanded. So that really does speak to the vision of having the Town Center as a center of Norfolk Town life. So these are, these are the types of strategies which we have, which you can see, hopefully get more detailed and add really some meat to the overall goal. I won't dwell on that first one because we do have to keep moving along, but just a few examples from the second goal, which is shifting the focus geographically down to the Route 115, 1A area, and supporting stable growth and incremental improvement there in that commercial district. So one of the ideas we have there in terms of a more concrete strategy is conducting a local planning process to develop a district vision and goals that can be used to modify zoning in that area. So the master plan, we can frame some higher-level ambitions and goals, but we are not doing a district-level planning process like you have done in Town Center. And that, that district, I think, is, could benefit from such a process as well. That could involve assessing parcel development potential, updating zoning bylaws, and creating greater flexibility in uses that are allowed. And I think another exercise and strategy which is worthwhile is to differentiate that future growth at the Route 115 and 1A intersection with Town Center. So being very clear about which one is attracting which opportunities, how they want to both evolve and grow in the future, and how they might complement each other but not compete with each other. And then thinking about where mixed-use development in that area may be appropriate, but again, not competing with Town Center. I think in, in the surrounding areas, in both Town Center and Route 115 and 1A, increasing the housing density and diversity of housing options in roughly a half-mile radius to both concentrate future growth in those areas which are already developed, but also to think about a more walkable and compact future for these districts and how the town can support that evolution over time. And that relates directly both to economic development and transportation. So it gives you, this, hopefully, I'm just kind of hitting some high notes, but it gives you a feel for the types of strategies in the detail that comes along. As we move through land use a little bit further, strengthening clusters of dense, walkable areas that can be connected by a multimodal network. You heard in the remarks I just made, some of those notions of increasing walkability and densification in concentrated areas over time. Encouraging active transportation to local destinations through biking and walking improvements, thinking about where those sidewalk gaps occur, how the biking network could evolve and be strengthened over time. Thinking about the Norfolk Housing Authority properties and increasing walking and biking near and around those properties. And then sort of communicating through online maps or other maps and analyses the current and future walking and biking connections so that the community can be both aware of what's available and where it all might be headed and be more supportive of the investments which would be required. In terms of balancing the small-town feel, we've heard a lot about that as well, with, with that growth in those commercial, existing commercial centers. So thinking about refining zoning tools to preserve open space, that might be taking another look at things like the cluster subdivision or the open space and recreation development. The notion potentially, applicability or exploration of transfer development rights, that's noted there as TDR, thinking about the effective use of conservation restrictions, or working, as the town has been doing, continuing to work toward compliance with 40B to gain control of those approvals, and that shows up in the housing strategies as well. But that's, that's really, as the town has experienced and knows very well, the wild card in terms of having a proactive growth strategy, and that when, when you're below the threshold of 10%, it's difficult to do so when 40B projects can show up at their own accord. And then also looking at other ways to explore conservation through tax title programs such as Chapter 61 or other resources for land conservation, and making those resources known to property owners who might have lesser-developed properties in the town today, or even agricultural used, used properties. The, I think this is the la, the final of the land use section, so I'll just finish with my elevator pitch and then see if there's any questions or thoughts. Or I guess I'll just, I'll pause there and see if, let me just turn it back to the committee and board members to see if this is, if this is a helpful approach, or if you'd rather just kind of be, be offering us comments as we flip through. Which do you think is, is better for the committee?
I think we could just-
Got time to do it.
Keep going?
I would just keep going. We can interject if we got questions, yeah.
Okay, great. Please, I don't think I said that, but please do feel free if you see something on the screen or a verbal remark that you'd like to comment or question. So on this, the last of the land use, so looking at the goal of pursuing long-term partnerships and stewardship of state-owned lands and resources. So those partnerships might include those with local organizations to steward local open space areas, both conservation lands and recreation properties as well, building regular communication and partnership with state prisons, which are both major landowners, employers, and sort of influencers of land use in the town, and thinking about their long-term plans and better coordination with them. Same would be said as a strategy for the MBTA and their impact in relationship to Town Center, both with the commuter rail access and the commuter rail parking lots and their long-term sort of objectives, both for transit but also for those properties. And then exploring long-term partnerships or opportunities with entities such as MWRA, neighboring municipalities, or others that could help with infrastructure, future infrastructure questions, future infrastructure improvements, or regionalization as well. And continuing to identify and work with, work to reduce municipal vulnerabilities in that regard, both with town-owned resources but also state-owned or, or private land resources as well in terms of where there might be water bodies, streams, rivers, et cetera. The last two, continuing to modernize zoning and programs to promote town goals, address modern challenges such as climate change and fossil fuel reduction. These are activities which the Planning Board has, has had underway and has been very proactive about over the years. Continuing to explore zoning updates to conserve undeveloped land, I think that's a critical component to the approaches at Town Center and 115 and 1A, is to think about ways to protect the areas which are under, undeveloped or underdeveloped today. Update requirements to integrate energy efficiency and sustainability upgrades and to future investments, thinking about green infrastructure, best practices for stormwater and wastewater requirements, and programs to potentially reduce food waste or increase composting and, and/or increase water conservation. Excuse me, sorry. Wrong way, or last one on land use. And then thinking about the potential future uses of land for economic development and sustainability. And what we heard, this is in reaction to, from hearing a lot from the community about the proactive attraction of certain uses or being patient with the develop, long-term development of certain strategic properties such as Southwood. And so using online tools or interactive platforms to build an understanding of zoning regulations in the town so that the, the town can see how those regulations fit with their desires for certain types of uses in certain locations. Collaborate with surrounding municipalities on developing a subregional plan for guiding growth. It's, I think, what we've heard in these conversations is that there are a lot of uses Norfolk residents enjoy which don't occur in Norfolk. So I think that more subregional coordination could help to build stronger connections between the full range of uses such as grocery stores or other shops and services that people are going to neighboring communities for. Providing annual updates through town meeting for the types of trends or even just progress or what the town is seeing in these critical locations like Town Center or 115 and 1A. Recruiting specific uses for specific properties and, and being more proactive about that on the side of town departments and town staff. And then thinking about town-owned property as a way to maybe potentially boost some of those specific uses in specific locations, and using that as a way to leverage what the town has, which in some cases could be land or, or a facility. So I know that was a lot, and I'll just, I guess, pause briefly before we pass it over to transportation, but hopefully, at the very least, you get a feel for how the strategies are adding detail to the goals.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, so we'll just press on then, and you can continue to interrupt as needed, and I'll hand it to Travis.
Good evening. Can I get a thumbs up if people can hear me? All right, great. So again, I'm Travis Pollack. I'm a transportation planner at Metropolitan Planning Council, and I'll go over the goals and strategies for transportation. So you'll see, I think, a little bit of connection here, obviously, as Josh mentioned, as we worked with the other planners here and talked to folks about, you know, ways to connect these goals and strategies. And the first goal we have for transportation is expanding walking, biking, and rolling connections to Town Center and other key destinations. And a couple of highlights of strategies that we developed is, one is developing a townwide multimodal access plan to prioritize the missing links. And we kind of saw this in, in the previous planning efforts that were done for the town and from the surveys, to really try to find ways to create those links where people can walk to areas such as Town Center, or eventually, as the area grows around 115 and 1A, and make sure that those are safe, including connections to future multi-use trails. Maybe the sidewalks are not always a way with that, strategies can be done to connect the town in various ways, but some various other trails and pathways could be done. Including that is the Town's Complete Streets Plan and Prioritization Plan, to make sure those are incorporated into all the roadway projects, and, and making sure that bike, bike, excuse me, bicycle parking is included, both in terms of public areas as well as new development. And then as the area grows or as development occurs, making sure that that development prioritizes walking, biking, rolling, and access for persons with disabilities in that infrastructure. Similarly, with the same time, as we expand that network, we want to make sure it's safe for everyone. So the goal about increasing street safety for all users is the next one. That includes things such as making sure that the town is doing its current safety measures in terms of signage and technology enforcement. We, we saw comments about concerns about speeding and traffic, and I think one thing we're noticing is traffic has increased locally. I think we're seeing, and we're not exactly sure exactly what's going on, but I think what we're seeing is as people are working from home more, we're seeing a little bit more localized traffic in the area as well. So we want to make sure that people are, are, are safe on the roadways. And finding where there's areas for high-crash locations and trying to do some maybe quick builds or some projects. We're now seeing some communities doing this more where they, they don't have to do a full design, they can do some things with plastic and bollards or signage and, and some striping, just try different things where there's those high-crash locations which have been identified. Same time, working with the Safe Routes to School program to implement, maybe some localized improvements around schools where kids can get to school, walk and bike. And then I'll point out that currently, MAPC and the MPO are going to do a regional Vision Zero Action Plan to reduce serious injuries and deaths on roadways. As that regional plan occurs, the town can then use that plan and its Complete Streets Plan to prioritize and fund improvements. In terms of, one thing we also heard was about street and sidewalk maintenance and trying to expand that and improve that. And we thought, just as the first strategy and the first goal is about that Townwide Multimodal Access Plan, really making that really a transportation master plan, and including an asset management plan for the sidewalks that are currently there and to be done in the future. In terms of also looking at the, again, at the safety area, are there safety areas where there maybe aren't sidewalks or inadequate sidewalks? That could be the priorities for that additional street work, making sure that when there is repaving and maintenance, that Complete Streets work is done to, where needed, you know, redesign the roadways to make sure it's safe for all users, using prioritization tools like MAPC's Local Access Score, that Regional Vision Zero Plan that I mentioned earlier, those could be ways to make sure to prioritize that investment. And then developing a modified participatory budget process to ensure that adequate funding is developed over time for the street and sidewalk network. Terms of next, couple areas we have here in terms of thinking about not only people that, that are using the streets today in terms of driving and walking, but also thinking about people that maybe don't have access to, to their own vehicles, or like seniors or students who can't drive yet, and thinking about ways that we can make the network work for all users. And so one thing we thought of, a couple different areas, is to continue to work with GATRA, which is the transit agency in the area that have the on-demand transit. What we've seen is, is that many times people are not aware of the transit options that are available in the town, whether it's GATRA or the Council on Aging, and to try to increase the awareness of that. And then looking at seeing where the Council on Aging and maybe GATRA are seeing what the needs are, both from the current data of where people are going with the transit systems or with Council on Aging trips, also where people requesting trips that aren't met. And then think about ways to maybe meet those needs with additional services, such as with the shuttle, additional shuttles, or volunteer driver programs, or even perhaps even a taxi program, or funded through Uber and Lyft rides. We've seen communities do that. As new development occurs, there can be transportation demand management strategies at those new developments, such as making sure there's the bike racks, you could even, eventually, if development occurs in enough area, you could look at some kind of car share service. And as Josh mentioned, we also realize the Town Center with the MBTA- And as Josh mentioned, we also realize the Town Center with the MBTA, with commuter rail station there is really key for a lot of the future development or growth in the area, a lot of changes that are going to occur. As the T works towards improving commuter rail service as part of the regional rail service, the town, I think, should be very proactive at talking with the MBTA about that, about that, you know, ways, are there ways to maybe reduce congestion at the crossing? I know that's been a, a difficult area at times for the residents. I know there was a talk about maybe shifting the platform down to try to eliminate or reduce the amount of time that the, the crossing gates are down, for example. I think trying to reengage the MBTA on that is, is important. In terms of then thinking about overall the zoning and land use and the, and thinking about the parking ordinances that go with them, that can also encourage more active uses and a greater density of uses. This is in terms of like great, looking at the parking data in the area to, to consider maybe reducing or eliminating parking minimums for some areas of development. Looking at that to see if there's ways to optimize use of land. We've seen some areas maybe realizing they don't need the parking, they can use it by, they don't have to tear it up, but you can block it off and say, it's pickleball or something like that, or it's some sort of farmer's market or something. When there is a high-volume event, looking for ways to, you know, optimize that in terms of the circulation of parking. As I mentioned, post-pandemic parking demand has changed a lot. Honestly, I'm not sure exactly how that will, we're not, we're not exactly sure what that means long-term, but I think continuing to monitor that and look and see where that goes in the future in terms of the parking demand in the downtown. And then I'll work, like I said, working with the T to, to conduct passenger counts to see not only who's continuing to use the commuter rail, but maybe where they're coming from. Maybe there's ways to get people to see that there's the Medway Shuttle or other options to get to the commuter rail and, and use the, and use different alternative ways to get to the station that can reduce maybe some of the traffic to at the station area. I think there's, there's one more after this, Josh. Thank you. Okay, so finally, our, our last goal is thinking about the future in terms of transportation. And when we show EVs, that's electric vehicles, AVs is autonomous vehicles, electric bikes that we're seeing becoming quite popular in some areas, and, and vehicle sharing options. So thinking about how the municipal, the, the town's fleet could eventually transition to EVs, we are seeing communities do that as they transition from certain vehicles to EVs. Incorporating charging into new development as well as in public spaces, so that when people transition to electric vehicles, they have places to charge. Helping people to understand the benefits and opportunities of electric vehicles. Massachusetts provides incentives for it, as well as there's some additional federal incentives. And then thinking about the future in terms of both e-bikes and autonomous vehicles. And I'll point out that, that often for charging, that doesn't have to be just for electric cars, that can also be charging for electric bikes as well. We are seeing charging stations now that do both, and people seem to like that, having that option. In terms of the future, we are seeing, you know, continual questions about how much autonomous vehicles will come along. I think when they come along, it's, it's going to be a little longer than what we think, but when they do, it can really change a lot about the way people get around. And so I think the town should just continue to think about that and work with others to, to try to find ways to think about, you know, what, how can they, how can that be a positive change for the community? Can it be something where people can ride hail on their own vehicle to pick them up and take them place? And then continue to monitor that in terms of what are, what's happening with GPS, with navigation apps, and responding to those impacts. So that's it for, for transportation. Like I said, a lot of these, we, we try to make sure that they were in harmony and worked with land use and development strategies and economic development as well, as we'll talk about.
Great, thank you Travis, and let's hand it over to Gurdeep.
Good evening, everyone. Can, everyone hear me?
Yes.
My name is Gurdeep Kar. I am a Senior Economic Development Planner with NA PC. And like Josh and Travis said, a lot of these strategies and goals really underscore what's been mentioned by them before me. So starting off with the first goal of prioritizing smart, responsible, and incremental development of Town Center, and really centering it as the hub of economic activity in the town. And in order to do that, there need to be alignments with wastewater solutions and investments in infrastructure that can support a growing business district there. And one of the strategies we have here also is exploring the potential benefits of creating some sort of funding structure that can reinvest those dollars back into the infrastructure investments being made in Town Center. The next goal we have is supporting the existing and, existing small businesses and attracting new small businesses, which goes hand-in-hand with activating Town Center. There are over 300 small businesses in Norfolk today, and many of them operate out of their homes. And in order to make sure the town can continue to support them, strategies include reviewing the local zoning and regulations to identify any barriers to their growth and success. Like Josh mentioned earlier, bringing and continuing to host activities in Town Center where some of these businesses can increase their visibility. And that would go into raising awareness for those businesses and that, and creating advertising opportunities for those consumer-facing establishments. And then some of this also means that continuing to provide business support through business-friendly office hours at Town Hall and possibly establishing a business development liaison role between the Town Hall and possibly the small business administration and really giving small businesses the attention they need so that they can be, they can continue to be successful in supporting The next goal here is encouraging commercial growth to increase local services and amenities. And in order to reduce the tax burden on individual property owners, the primary tax revenue comes from single-family property owners, and we'll hear a lot about the tax burdens. And in order to do that, we really need to diversify the land uses and promote any potential vacant sites for businesses looking to locate and developers who want to meet the demand. So part of that means mapping the vacant commercial sites just to increase awareness and understanding of what's developed and what can be brought where, promoting those vacant commercial sites, actively marketing them, and marketing them for businesses that makes sense to locate in those areas. So for example, over Ashire Industrial Park, bring in more construction trades businesses, many folks who might be ready to scale up from their homes or moving in from neighboring towns. And in that same vein, to collaborate with those property owners who might be redeveloping or expanding their, their, the properties that they own. So that really means working with those commercial landlords to, and helping them meet what today's market looks like. A lot of these small businesses, in order to scale, cannot enter into those five-year leases that are, that have been the traditional norm. Business owners mentioned that they are, would be happy to locate into spaces that they would like greater flexibility, things like exploring shorter-term leases, shared amenities, et cetera. And something else that we also want to highlight is building strategies along supporting the local farming and recreation economy here in town. The next goal is to facilitate and incentivize new right-sized commercial development that supports diversity of small landlords and small developers. We want to, again, preserve that small-town feel, the small-town character while creating that economic activity and vitality that residents are seeking. And in order to do that, strategies include exploring incentives for property owners to invest in their properties to encourage and attract new businesses, exploring temporary use of vacant land at commercial spaces, things like pop-ups, supporting local small landlord, landlords to connect with current and potential tenants, just helping tenants navigate that process and attracting them to Norfolk if they're looking at a handful of neighboring towns to locate to. Some residents of Norfolk are looking to expand out of their homes, but may need to go into a neighborhood town, and we want to capture that business activity here. And that includes things like exploring locally-owned co-op store models to support locally-produced foods, goods, and services. That goes back to supporting the agricultural economy. And the last one is to make sure that we're reviewing and updating development standards that will preserve the small-town character while not, while removing any barriers to that economic growth. And continuing on, we want to prioritize the adaptive reuse of underutilized town-owned facilities and historic resources in allowing them to be used by local small businesses and community-based organizations. So getting creative with these buildings that, that the town has access to. This includes, so there are, there is funding out there to rehabilitate these, these buildings, to activate them. Perhaps there could be partnerships with nonprofits and town organizations to facilitate event programming in those spaces. And finally, I believe this is our last goal, is to foster equitable economic growth, to strengthen economic diversity and sustainability through a number of strategies, long-term identifying and exploring support services for the larger anchor businesses in town. This includes things like creating farm-to-cafeteria procurement processes, which the town can help coordinate, identifying and exploring opportunities for local businesses and workforce development, which go hand-in-hand, establishing commercial community and land trust for incubating small businesses, creating an innovation hub for those businesses, an incubation hub for those businesses. And provide, and welcome, creating programs and opportunities to welcome entrepreneurs and business owners from all backgrounds.
Great, thank you Gurdeep, and thank you all committee members for hanging in there with us. We know this is wide, both wide-ranging and deep information at the same time, so it's tough. This is the last topic for this evening, and then we'll have four more next time. And Andrea apologizes that she couldn't join us as she's traveling tonight, but this is the topic she's been most squarely involved in, in housing. So I'll just walk you through the strategies and goals here. The first is increasing the share of affordable housing in terms of the goal in Norfolk to better serve a range of household incomes. The strategies related there are to continue to review and assess the recently-changed inclusionary zoning and ensure it can be applied to the 3A zoning, compliance with 3A, and also that it's in general actually encouraging affordable housing in town. Leverage town-owned and tax-titled lands to develop affordable housing as, as that opportunity may be available. Continuing the Affordable Housing Trust's Scattered Site Housing Program for first-time homebuyers. Consider raising the purchase limit in that program to account for current market conditions. Leveraging Community Preservation Act funding for affordable housing and continuing to fund the Affordable Housing Director position. And then creating a regular predictable funding source for the Affordable Housing Trust and a five-year action plan to respond to that. And then developing and maintaining relationships with local and regional affordable housing developers and seeing what, you know, having a communication about what their needs may look like or their challenges or constraints, and helping to respond to those locally and, and invite them to be a part of housing production in the town. Participating in the Southwest, the subregional area swap and TRIC, both those are NA PC's subregional designations, which Norfolk is a part of, and they host a shared housing services office, which Norfolk could participate in to expand the town's housing capacity and, and expertise. The next goal, expanding the, the types of housing options that can be built in Norfolk in the context of existing infrastructure and housing need. So tie this strategy to open space preservation. Smart growth and housing can also contribute to the preservation of open space through clustered subdivisions and open space preservation by adding, taking the same area of a subdivision that would have been developed, but making the development more compact, and then you have conservation area on the remaining land, of course. Zoning amendments to remove barriers to diversify the housing typologies, so beyond single-family homes to allow duplexes, conversions from a single-family to a duplex or a triplex when the house might be able to afford such a conversion. Streamline permitting to allow for more buy-right housing developments, including, again, diversifying beyond the single-family home and allowing some of those sensitive, somewhat denser, but also, you know, fit within the context of single-family homes, the duplexes, the triplexes, and that sensitive difference, different types of housing that can be available. Use, looking at ways to incentivize use of the OSRD, the Open Space Residential Development Bylaw, exploring use of a 40Y starter home district, looking at ways to protect trees through tree protection bylaws, avoiding clear-cutting of properties, and retaining that small-town feel and the semi-rural character that has, has been so often mentioned. And then enabling guidelines in site plan review to go hand-in-hand with maybe more of those buy-right approvals for diverse housing options. And then looking at the local wastewater regulations and seeing where they're divergent from Title V and if there are ways to bring them back into alignment. And I know that there's a sort of historical conversation there and bring that into present considerations with housing production. Thinking about the next goal, which is target new housing production to strategic locations. We've mentioned Town Center and 115, 1A, and also the former Southwood Hospital site. Thinking about each of those as ways to ensure that the town's housing goals are being met. So that includes the, for example, the current process which the town has underway to work with the community and the developer to try to discover what, what a solution might be there to help both remediate that property, but also to put it to productive use, both to meet the town's goals, but also to contribute to the town's tax, tax rolls as well. Considering, or pursuing infrastructure investments in Town Center, again, you've seen that show up as an important strategy across a number of topics. Work with the owners of some specific stalled properties, for example, the Stop &amp; Shop parcel in the Town Center to continue to try to find a way to develop that as a site for mixed use, where you could have contributions to housing, new housing types in the Town Center, along with commercial uses. Looking at ways to pursue collaboration with developers on these locations, like as mentioned before, but targeting them to some of these specific sites and exploring, continue, always exploring zoning modifications that might evolve as, you know, as time moves forward. And improving housing stability, the next goal, and affordability for existing and future residents, meaning that residents feel confident that they can stay in place in Norfolk as they go through different life stages. Some of the strategies there include exploring programs that offer services for seniors who wish to age in place. There are certain grant programs, for example, which offer accessibility modifications to homes for those who might need it as, as they age and might need different types of assistance. Work with the Housing Authority and Affordable Housing Trust to increase support for local seniors and expanding the housing stock that's available for different options as, as seniors age in the community. And then work with the Council on Aging to And then work with the Council on Aging to offer training and resources to address concerns and to respond with resources that may be available to make those more widely known. And expanding the opportunity for things like accessory dwelling units to potentially expand options for seniors to age in place, either through offering onsite sort of assistance, someone that could be there professionally to help, or offering a additional income stream as well. Finally, the goal to promote commercial and residential development, to increase vibrancy in Town Center. Quite a few focus around Town Center. This could be continuing to promote and socialize with the community and the public about why Town Center can and should have additional growth. Engage peer learning from towns with success in attracting private investments in the commercial centers and learning from those practices. And then defining and distinguishing, as was mentioned in land use, the differences between Town Center and Route 115, 1A, and make sure that those future growth and opportunities are not internally competing with each other. So we'll pause there. Maybe I'll even go ahead and stop my show. We have eight minutes. I know we laid a lot on you, and all we have remaining is just a few slides to tell you what's up next. But if there are anything that, any thoughts that any of that brings from the committee members? We apologize that it was a lot to put on you all.
I just have a question about like, not tonight, but future state. That's a lot of information. Is there a, is there a framework, like, to help us kind of think through these things? Like, kind of group them into buckets and kind of, it's just, it's, it's a lot, so my, my brain has gone off in like 30 different directions in the last 50 minutes, just thinking through this stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point, Gary. And I think that we, so, one of the things we're also looking for, and you heard them verbally identified this evening, are some of those cross-cutting themes that are starting to show up across strategies in a number of topics. And those are sort of self-elevating as priorities because they do impact so many, a variety of goals and a variety of topic areas in the town. And so I think that will be one framework by which this gets organized a little bit and that you all can react. I think the, the other is we'd love to hear any of those, any of the, any way you can document the wandering of your mind that occurred and communicate that across to us. So a quick email or anything like that would be helpful. And any thoughts you have do help us to both refine and understand how this information is being received. We're trying to communicate it, but it's also helpful to hear a little bit of a feedback loop on that. So the other thing I'll mention is that this, as it's, as the content is developing, it's sort of necessarily being both summarized and kind of stripped down to just communicate as plainly as we can. But this will be combined as it gets packaged as a document. One of the final steps we move toward is putting this all together in a master plan for the town, an actual document you all have. We will start to think about ways to make this more accessible through graphics, illustrations, diagrams, bringing back some of that existing conditions analysis, which we went through, that all this is building upon. But you might not be seeing all of those sort of, the data reflecting, being reflected in these strategies, et cetera, at this point, but that will all get packaged up in that way. Okay, thank you.
Can we see the strategies for the other four goals before the next meeting, so we can have questions for you or comments prepared?
Yes, we can do that, Eric. I agree, that would have been a more efficient way to do that, but just us getting ourselves organized to this point, I think it'll be easier for the next meeting since we're already to this point of organization with the, similarly with the other four. So we can do that in advance. And I'll send this presentation back around so you all can respond to it and take it, take another look as well. We've got Kevin and Chris on the online.
Yeah, I'm just going to quickly build on Gary's very public admission of his attention deficit disorder. A lot of the things that we went over there are already well in motion. I mean, we talked about the wastewater district and Town Center expansion. We have a number of conversations going on surrounding that. We talked about some of the economic development initiatives that you highlighted that are also currently in motion. My question is, at what point will we be able to take into account how far down the road we are on all those initiatives and be able to layer them into some sort of prioritization report that we're going to be able to highlight exactly what those steps look like for the short end, long term?
Yes, like, that's, that's an important step. So there are a few things which will come together in that final box of the three-part diagram that we've been showing, and that's the action plan for the town. I think part of that will be, Kevin, as you suggest, documenting what the town has already done and trying to give some framing to what those next steps we think are, and both where, where the resources could be to help in those next steps, and the timeframes and the responsible parties as well. We'll also be trying to, with Rich's help, as we begin to turn all this more into a document for consumption by town leadership, but also the town and community as well. A documentation of what the town, the type of progress that the town has made since the last master plan. I think a lot of things that we hear in processes such as this, particularly when we get to this point, is that a lot of these ideas are ideas that have been talked about for a long time. Nothing ever happens, nothing ever gets done. And what we want to communicate in part is that there has been a lot of progress since the last master plan in fact, and that while some of the topics, I think in a, in a general term, of course, Town Center will probably be a topic forever in, in the town of Norfolk, but there has been progress made and there continues to be new improvements that are underway. And I think we're, what we'll be trying to do in this final, as we turn toward the final phase of work, is getting very specific, as we're starting to do now, but also getting very clear about what those tangible next steps are to keep the ball rolling and continue to move the, the town in the direction of these next 10 years, which is what the master plan's looking at. Personally, I don't think it's a bad plan to have continuity in a town's vision from one master plan to the next. It means that you all have, have been, I think, very thoughtful in your previous considerations and vision statements, and we are, we are building upon that effort, but it would be, in my regard, not, sometimes it's okay to make a pretty abrupt shift, but I think in this case, there's a lot of continuity. Just one last, one last thought that I didn't mention yet in this meeting, but I will mention, I think, on one of my next step slides. In helping all of this that I've just talked about in response to your question, Kevin, we will also be doing a second round of municipal immersion conversations with town leadership and department heads. I think we're, what we plan to do in those meetings is talk through these strategies with them so that hopefully they can bring the on-the-ground reality, practicality, and knowledge of where the town is at on many of these topics to bear on our information and report. And I would imagine that that'll be very, in some cases, it may be very painful conversations for us to have, but they will be very helpful and that I think it'll make the master plan much more pragmatic and implementable. Chris?
Sort of tying together Gary and Kevin's comments, like, whenever I see an exercise like this, I immediately start thinking around level of effort for that prioritization, as well as the biggest bang for your buck. What's the most impact? And so from a visualization perspective, I'm thinking something like a magic quadrant kind of a presentation where you can dot level of effort versus the impact received for these different activities. And really allow us to identify which things we can accomplish quickly with the fewest amount of resources for the best paying for the buck.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. That'd be a great framework for us to, as, as this content is developed, I think we can start to sort it in that way. That's a great idea.
Josh, you had mentioned that, you know, there's good, good to have continuity between a previous master plan and then the one we're building now. Have you identified any areas or items in the previous master plan that are dramatically different from what we're proposing today? And if not, and maybe, maybe you can't answer that question right now, but it would be interesting to know, are there any things that were, were in that mass, that previous master plan that have dramatically changed and why? I mean, for good or for bad? I mean, you know, we're all, that, that master plan is quite old and, and, you know, times move on pretty fast nowadays, so something that was in that plan may not be applicable anymore, but it'd be good to possibly note that of, hey, this was a focus, but it's no longer a focus, and here's why.
And the related thing would be what topics have been addressed completely and are not, not an issue anymore?
Yeah, like, what have we completed? Or, and now it's, you know, it's, we completed that, now it's kind of in a maintenance mode or it's just done.
What have we checked off?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I think my answer to that one will be less specific this evening, but I do think that that's an exercise that we plan to do. And as the, our current content has developed, it's easier to do that comparison. But also, as I mentioned in my response to Kevin too, the accounting of what the town has accomplished, I think is very important. I think one of the ways that will probably show up in the final plan document is almost like a topical sidebar that you see in chapters. So it'll be like, you know, accomplishments in this area, and we'll have some of those points and milestones with, across each topic as people review the content of the plan.
Yep. Any other comments here in the room? Anybody else on Zoom have their hand up? I can't see. Nope, okay. All right, Josh, you were going to go next steps?
Yeah, let me just do it real quick. We don't have too much left, but I will share this just so everyone has a feel for what's ahead of us. So we are in, still in the phase, which on this slide is headlined drafting goals and strategies. I think as, as you all just pointed to in some of your questions and comments, we will be shifting in the new year toward defining those priorities. And I think that's what this, all of this information allows us to do is, is see those, where, where these strategies are overlapping, where they get elevated. You see on the list here, the remaining items we need to do in that drafting goals and strategies phase, the big items of which there's been quite a bit of work, are the second municipal immersion day. I think that is likely to land in mid-January. And then the reflection and summarization of all of the feedback we've gathered from the community, which I did, I mentioned, will, will shape both the goals and the strategies somewhat as, as we get that categorized. Then in terms of the calendar and a timeline, we're here on the yellow, vertical yellow bar there in the middle of December, and we'll really be shifting, continuing to meet with you all likely on a monthly basis through the duration of this work, which is headed towards the April or so completion. We do have, do plan to be headed toward pulling this all together in more of a draft document, or at least starting to head that way, say, in the month of February or so. And then trying to land a final community engagement session where we can kind of present all of this and pull it all together for more public consumption as, as we get to that point, say, March or so. And then we would plan, we, I know we've done quite a bit of surveying of the community throughout this process, but it would be very helpful towards the, the very end to do a survey, which would be all about that prioritization of implementation and get a final weigh-in on those items, which are really elevated as the critical next steps for the town. In terms of our next meeting, where we will go through the second series of strategies and get it to you all in advance, that will be on Tuesday, January 9th, so just after the new year. And then the topics for that will be historical and cultural resources, open space, community health, and community facilities and services. And as always, all of this documentation, ways to, for people to connect with the surveys and online interfaces between now and the 18th are all available on the project website, which you can see on the screen at mapc.ma/norfolk2035, including this evening's presentation as well. So we're continuing to make excellent progress and of course, as it has been throughout, it's amazing, we've been together, I think we went on our community tour together in December of last year, so it's almost been about a year since the start. And I think we've made tremendous progress and really have engaged quite a bit of community, and it's all thanks to the efforts of the committee and the planning board, and it's been really a pleasure to work with you all. And as we sign off for this evening, I'll just wish you all happy holidays, because I won't talk to you beforehand.
Thank you, Josh.
Same to you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Any other comments on that before we move on to our public hearing?
I'm just thinking, some of us have been working with Josh for like 40 years now.
You have?
I'm actually really tired of him.
Happy holidays, Josh.
Yeah. Thank you again, Josh and team. So, all right, well, we, we will roll into our 8 o'clock public hearing for Three MacArthur Ave. So we will, I guess, we already have the, I mean, we...
Do you want to read the continuance request?
Yep. So Eric, you want to, do you have, you want to read that continuance request? Oh, it's not in the packet?
Hold on, I can pull it up.
I can get it here.
I can pull it up.
Let me find it here. I found it. All right, so we do have a request for continuance from United Consultants. Just says, "Dear Chairman, Pack and Ponyboard Members, on behalf of the owner John Robbins, our requesting an extension for the hearing scheduled for December 12th, 2023," which is today. "We have completed the existing condition field locations as well as the existing conditions plan. We have prepared a preliminary layout and design and have a meeting scheduled with the town officials on December 20th, 2023, so we can obtain comments prior to finalizing the design. Once comments have been received and the design has been finalized, we will submit the revised design plans to the planning board for review and approval. We request our continuance to your meeting in January to allow the time to complete the field and design work. Thank you in advance for your assistance on this matter. Sincerely, Richard Kudrow." So continuously requested. We do have, just, I just want to point out there that their, their application expires in end of January. So we've, we've already extended it through there, so that's what's currently in the, in the process. Do you have any other comments, Rich, on that or no?
No, just in terms of, you've, they've extended through the end of January, which will give the board time to review the application and decide in January. And, and goes beyond the meeting, so that way gives the board time to put together a decision and file with the clerk's office by the end of the month.
Right. That's right.
Okay, well, they are making progress, so that's good.
That's correct. That's my understand, I mean, that's my understanding. The progress has been made. There is a meeting with, with town officials so they can discuss that, you know, I, you know, get with DPW fire and all, all that, because it is a unique situation with a private road. So that, that meeting is scheduled for the 20th, which is good. So it's, it's, nothing's ready for tonight, I understand, obviously, because, you know, there needs to be some, it's kind of almost like they put together the draft, now they got to get with the town to make sure that that...
Right, it's quite the process to do all of that.
Right.
I am, I mean, certainly I want to know what the DPW thinks before we make a decision, but the, the fire chief is actually the person that kept ringing in my mind every time we had those meetings about MacArthur. Because he was not, it would be the only property in town where they, we'd be making kind of a safety issue in perpetuity. It's the only one that it would be, with, you know, there's other circumstances that chief said, you know, if somebody has an oxygen machine or something, there's a note in the system that tells you that, but this would be the one that says, you can't get your water truck anywhere near there, which is obviously a safety concern. So I definitely want to hear chief's feedback on that with the, you know, if they were coming down from Hunter to MacArthur, how does that change for him? Because he was, he was not feeling very good about it going from Lake Shore up that little hill there.
Right, right. So to elaborate on what Melissa's saying, for those of you that aren't, you know, aware of the situation, the grade is very steep coming from, from Lake Shore, and the fire chiefs that are vehicles are not, cannot access that road from that direction.
Right, so they could, they could have their water truck basically at the end of that road and then run for a thousand feet with the hose, the water, which is obviously an issue.
Also ambulance, I mean, how do you get an ambulance in there?
Sure, I think chief was more concerned, I think, about having the trucks be able to turn around and then getting the water truck up there. I think because there wasn't a hydrant near there.
There was not.
There is at the top.
At the top of Hunter.
On Hunter, right, okay. So chief was really the one that I would love his feedback. I mean, of course, Claire as well, but from a safety perspective.
And he is one of the participants in that meeting on the twentieth.
That's great.
Yeah. I mean, it's it's it really comes down to it's a private road, the grade is very steep coming from Lake Shore. It's more manageable coming from Hunter, but I mean, it's it's still a private road, unfinished. And.
With drop offs on both sides.
It's, yeah, so it it's gonna, it's a very challenging design. And we've already, we've already approved the the extension through the end of January. So that, I mean, that's already previously approved. I mean, it's.
Can that go any further than that? Like, I just, I don't like when these get caught in cycles of things going on forever. So it's like January twenty-fourth, the.
Well, you have to mutually agree to extend it beyond the.
We would have to, they would have to submit, we'd have to agree to it.
Got it.
Okay.
Will the butters have a chance to see that plan before the January ninth meeting?
They depend, I mean, will the, so the question is, will the butters have a chance to see the plan before the January ninth meeting? I think it just depends on how soon we get the, receive those documents. I mean, it's gonna be tight, because if we're meeting, if they're meeting with the town on the twentieth, you got the holidays in there to go revise plans, get them ready for the ninth, I mean, it's definitely possible, but it's just how soon can we get them?
We want their feedback on it. They need to have respect, their time.
Yeah, a couple of days.
Give them the plan.
Yeah, so the twen, yeah.
They'll review it.
Ninth is on a Tuesday. Yeah, it'd be nice to have those plans, you know, the Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday prior. So that could be something, Rich, that.
The plans will need to be back, they'll need to be here for them and you.
Yeah, the week before. The week before.
Do we, when do we engage Beta to?
They'll have to be peer reviewed.
Get feedback. Exactly.
Let's.
Is there even time before the ninth to get that peer review?
There could be.
Maybe.
Yeah, it depends on. It depends on.
Time, it's gonna be tight.
Are they aware of these requirements to get all this in time?
They're aware of it. They'll be reminded of it, I mean.
Yeah, Richard, Richard from United Consultants has been been brought many projects to the planning board, so he's aware of it. So, but I mean, I I know, I don't know the situation and I'm not trying to defend him, but it's like sometimes some of the things are out of his control with surveyors or whatever. I mean, I don't know the situation, you know, I, but.
I think part of the discussion with staff would be if there's something worth reviewing. The peer review, you know, that's really kind of the benchmark right now.
Yeah, right now, we just don't have anything that's viable to review.
Yeah, if it's not supportable, feasible by town staff, then there's really not a really a point to have a peer review done. So I don't want to chicken anything.
But do we need to be able to vote on the peer reviewed documents on the ninth?
Oh, do you need to, um, yeah, yeah. They can do the review, they can do the review. It wouldn't take them, it would not take Beta that long to turn around the review for this. It's not a big, you know, large project to be able to do.
It sounded like the fire station.
It's not, yeah. Larger concern or the issue at hands if it's something presented to review.
Right.
Now, you, you might need to have another meeting on this in January, potentially.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Before the end of the month, so that that may need to happen, but. I can't predict yet. See what comes of it.
It would probably be worth just reversing that timeline and sending them an email to say, we need this on this day in order to do this on this day, just so that they're aware of this, so that we don't just show up to the next meeting. And then, you know, we have so many questions and then we have to have more meetings after that. If we could just pull that back in and just reverse that timeline, I think that would make the most sense for them and just see if they can actually meet that timeline to get the peer review before we see it. Otherwise, we're just, we're looking at a plan that hasn't been reviewed, so we're not gonna be able to vote on it anyway.
Right. It's a good point. I'm sure you could put something together that's a simplified version of that that kind of backends the dates.
Yeah.
Okay. You do that? I mean, it's it's been a slow process, long slow process. Sounds like they're making progress. I don't, we got that meeting, they're, they have the meeting with the town officials, which is good. Trying to squeeze this all in before the end of January is gonna be really tight. It's possible, but.
And part of the struggle is getting everybody in the room to look at these things as well. That's part of the, there's multiple schedules of people that are that need to be present to review this stuff, which is definitely.
Right.
Not excuse, it's just.
No, it's just how it goes.
Yeah, so.
Yep, that's right. Chris, you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Any other board member comments before we open it up to anyone in the room or on Zoom? Okay, anybody on Zoom or anyone in the room have a comment?
Yeah, I do, Chad.
Okay.
Excuse me, hi, Mike Ferrera, can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks. I just want to follow up on my email to everybody yesterday. I know you're talking about the end of January now. I can't imagine that all this is gonna come together by then. So I am, I'm just concerned, I'm at a loss as to how many times we're gonna kick this can down the road, because the end of January is gonna make it over four months that this has been in play.
Yep.
And you don't need that much time to survey three hundred, three hundred and fifty feet. It's just, it's crazy. And I, you gotta draw a line in the sand somewhere, so.
I do understand that, we do have that deadline at the end of January. I mean, we, that's, that's to us is that line in the sand if we, because we don't have to extend it after that.
Sounds like we're trying to crack the door open a little bit, knowing that January thirtieth or whenever is probably not feasible.
It's very possible.
So in addition to that, to the point you made Chad earlier about, you know, the topography and all that. If you pave from the top of Hunter down to essentially the top of where the Lawson's driveway is, you are going to create a major traffic pattern change for everyone in this neighborhood that now becomes a viable road and a very busy road for anybody coming in from the north down Lake Shore. They will now just suck it up and navigate the hundred and hundred and twenty-five feet of gravel outside the Lawson's driveway. They'll be unfinished road and that's it. So, and same in the other direction. So they just need to deal with just a little bit of gravel and, you know, you guys have said a few times, the Lawson's are responsible for that gravel road, which I find incredible. But if that happens, you're going to have daily traffic in both directions. Are you going to have a twenty-four foot paved road to accommodate traffic going in both directions on that hill? I just don't see it. And I know you don't see it too. You pretty much just said it.
That was one of our concerns. It was mentioned at one of our previous meetings. That was one of our concerns. If you if you improve, say, three fourths of that road and you got this little remaining portion, yes, it's gonna invite traffic. And that that last remaining portion is the steepest portion of it. So that has to be dealt with with the plan. So that.
Yeah, people will suffer through that hundred feet of gravel to get to pavement if they're coming from Lake Shore. And if they're going down Hunter, they'll just know that at the end of the road, they're gonna be faced with, you know, gravel finish before they get out onto Lake Shore.
Right.
So it's, regardless, and I pointed this out to Rich last week, there is no way that that road will not become heavily traveled if it gets paved.
Yeah, well, that's something that we, we're very much aware of as well. And we don't want to, we do not want to create more problems or more special situations. You know, that's, that's not what we're about. We wanna, we wanna have a plan that is is viable and safe for everybody and we don't want to create anything special. And by improving three fourths of that, it 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 does introduce more traffic, like you're saying. And we're, we're definitely aware of that and that's something we're gonna consider when we do see, once we see something. And we've asked Rick Kudrow to 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 address that when he presents his plan.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's going to affect everybody that lives up on this end of Hunter, the far end of Hunter, everybody on Grove, Litchfield, Carlo, oh, it completely changes the entire everything up here. It just, it just flips the entire neighborhood.
Yep, we're very much here.
To accommodate one home.
Yep.
It's just mind boggling.
Yeah.
The unfinished part down the Lawson's is not part of this road improvement. And you will not have twenty-four feet of right of way outside of their driveway. Cars are going to be going essentially through the end of their driveway. Their driveway goes right out onto the gravel.
Yep.
On MacArthur.
I understand, Mike, any, anything additional? Yeah, I mean, anything besides that? I, we get that, we understand that.
Okay, I, this is, I'm, I think we all understand like what we're faced with trying to get this to become a paved road. And it's just a monumental effort, again, for one house. And it completely changes the dynamic of the neighborhood for everybody else in the neighborhood.
No, I understand that. You've you've mentioned that a few times. Is there anything additional, any new comment?
Well, it doesn't get lost on anybody.
No, I I understand that, but I just wanna, I wanna be amenable to anybody else who's on the call that wants to talk.
Yeah.
Well, I think actually, in in respect to this was actually, those points have been raised before. This is just to continue this to the next time to, so I would advise just to vote to continue and then take those, I mean, those comments have already been raised.
Yep.
Take them under advisement.
Okay. So unless there's any new comments, let's like to entertain a motion to to continue until the January ninth meeting, twenty twenty-four at?
Eight PM.
Eight PM?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Sorry.
All right, we will do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, so we will continue this until the ninth.
Thank you.
All right, so next is a eight fifteen public hearing. We're a little behind schedule for one hundred R Pond Street. It is a request for extension of a special permit for the wireless communication facility. So we need to read this thing because it is brand new.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. Turner Law, section forty-eight and the Norfolk zoning by law, section three ten six dot thirteen. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at eight fifteen PM, room one twenty-four at Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, relative to a special permit extension for property located at one hundred R Pond Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant J Lee Associates LLC of Marlboro is requesting an extension of special permit number twenty twenty-two dash O two for the installation of three dish wireless antennas with the associated equipment to the existing wireless communications facility. The property owned by NextGrid Patriots LLC and is located in the C one B zoning district, referenced in Sessors Map nineteen, block sixty-nine, lots forty-three. The application plans are available for public inspection on the town of Norfolk website backslash planning board or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during hours nine to six, Monday through Thursday.
So the, the project is exactly the same. The only thing that happened in this case is expired from the time to act on it. And so their question, they unfortunately didn't request an extension within the timeframe, so they need to revote it. So there is no change in scope in terms of the project. One of the issues that was hanging up before was taxes owed. Those have been taken care of.
Okay.
So they have a good standing. So they're essentially, you can, it's really to revote it. As a side note to this topic would be that future consideration would be for the board to change our bylaw to match the state statute, because we have a much tighter window in terms of these permits. And we've seen quite a few of these come in where they, there's something that comes up within that one year and not able to get where they had a little more time, they would not need to be before you again just to renew a permit with no change of scope, just a timing issue.
Okay, so that's a little side note.
That's a little side note, yeah.
All right, well, let's talk about that. Let's talk about that under the town planner updates.
All right.
So, so same, same project, same scope. He just didn't file for the, or they didn't file for the extension, so now you gotta come back and start the whole process all over again.
Stop this, yes.
Okay.
How does the, are there financials involved with this? Is there payment to the town on year one and year two? And does this start us at zero or is it increment to where we thought we would be by now?
No, the taxes were, the property owner, not the the Leasee, didn't pay their property taxes and time and so they, they have, the property has since sold from the previous owner, which they paid the taxes, which is, NextGrid actually purchased the, well, subsidiary NextGrid LLC, but the property do go forward with the seller. So they're fine. I mean, they paid their tax bill. They don't pay the back bill in the future, that's a future issue, but, but they're in good standing now.
Okay.
So to kind of streamline this, if you wanted to, you don't have any comments per se, you can open it to the public and open and close the hearing unless there's particular comments and get voted decision and do it pretty quickly if you so desire.
I don't have any comments, seems pretty straightforward. Board members? Chris, you have any comments?
Nope, pretty straightforward.
Okay, any, anyone in the public on room or on Zoom have any comments? Okay, hearing none. We will, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
They're moved. Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. And can I get it, what's it?
You need to roll call, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's right.
Can I get a second on that? Did I get?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And my, the chair votes aye. Okay, so now, public hearing is closed, so now we need to vote on the decision. And we, Rich, you have a draft decision for us. I saw somewhere.
There we do.
So we, yeah, I don't have it in the packet. So do you have a draft decision on the, you can put? Betsy's gonna put it up.
I don't think we saw a date.
Sunday two.
Same decision number.
Same decision.
So can Chris see this at home? Can people see it? Yeah, he can see it. Okay. All right. So we got special permit, granted time extension. But is it really a time extent? I mean, I thought it was a whole new permit. It's not really a time extension. He missed that.
We can change though. It's a new.
New decision.
It is, but.
It is.
I mean, he missed the time extension window technically. So it's really.
So it was, let me look at the.
So I don't think you can really say it's an extension.
Um, so, extension for requests for special permits. So it is an extension.
Special permit X.
I'll tell you what. It isn't. If you're not, we can wordsmith it and then you can vote it later if you want.
Do you want to give a whole no permit number?
We can give it a whole no permit number.
I mean, I think we should. I think it should be a new permit number, not say an extension because that's the whole point is we missed it.
That's fine.
So then you want to do that and we'll vote on it?
The next meeting.
At the next meeting?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Yeah, we'll do that.
If you want to. Yeah. Okay, we will do that. So.
We'll have it teed up for the next meeting.
Awesome.
Need to reopen the hearing then?
No, you close it.
Nope.
No.
That's done.
Just render the decision.
Well, we opened this as of an extension of special permit in two hundred twenty-two.
I don't think it materially.
No, I don't agree with it.
True. You're right. We did. Right.
Well.
It's easy enough to reopen it with the correct.
How we advertise it?
Depends on how it was advertised because it all needs to match, right? Advertisement, hearing and the decision. So if what you have on the screen matches what's what's then I say we move forward with that.
What's the hearing? So it's an extension.
I mean, that that's fine. It is. Hearing was that listed as that. So if the public notification was also matched, then and the decision matches that. Okay.
You could just vote it. You could vote it as an extension if you want. I would I don't think it's materially going to make a difference on this permit.
Okay.
The applicant's not on.
Uh, Brian, yeah, Brian Sullivan, I believe, is the applicant that he's on.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian?
Yeah, I'm here. I can hear. Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you, Brian?
Yeah, I guess what I still don't want to. Good. How are you?
Good. Can you hear us, Brian?
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
I can hear you. I don't know. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Maybe delay.
Yeah. So we I think the way it was discussed originally, uh, is there a delay?
There must be a horrible delay.
Bad delay.
Anyway, can you, uh, they're getting better? Yeah, it is. So I'll just speak and maybe so I think the just being extension retroactive to when it expired, I think, is what it was thought. But that is up to you folks. We're going to be starting as soon as we get the approval. So from the billing department.
You'd be going at your own risk. So I think you just voted as is.
I I agree. I will backtrack. I mean, if everything was listed, we it needs to stay consistent. And and so let's just leave it at that then. Okay, so so special permit application. So what the decision you're going to put back up there?
Yep. There it is.
So special permit, extension, today's date, and everything else is the same.
Mm hmm.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Any comments? Okay.
Oh, you said the new the owner is new. Is that accurate Interstate Radio?
The owner is new. We'll we'll change that. Yeah. Actually, do you have that?
We can still approve it.
Right.
Yeah, we could still. We could still prove it pending updating the owner.
Updating the current owner.
Good catch.
The owner and the applicant are different.
Okay, so the applicant and the owner needed change?
Yes.
Yes.
And so the just for clarity, the owner is Next Grid and the applicant is?
Patriot LLC and the.
And the applicant is J Lee Associates LLC?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
There it is right there.
Okay.
Both are down filed correctly in the notice, so.
Okay, so the notice is correct. The public hearing note was correct.
We'll edit the decision.
Right, and I'll print a signature page for you tonight.
Okay. So everybody comfortable with the decision pending those revisions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Still need a motion?
So we need a motion. We need a motion to approve decision as as
amended?
amended with the applicant being J Lee Associates LLC of Marlboro and the owner being Next Grid.
Patriot LLC.
Patriot LLC.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we will sign that tonight.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
No problem, Brian.
Much appreciated.
Yep, thank you.
Hopefully, I was the only one. There's going to be technical difficulties, but.
Well, we've been okay so far.
Yeah.
Okay, new business is the thirty-seven to forty-three Lake Shore Drive A and R plan?
Yes.
So Rich?
Jim Nerva from Dunne McKenzie is here.
Okay.
Oh, Jimmy's here.
Hopefully, this is it. The land court had a if you want to just step the mic real quickly to explain what happened with the land court.
Oh, Jimmy, here, you can use one of these mics if you want. And I'll just make sure the green light is on. Thank you. Thank you.
Heating up in here. I'll turn it. I'll turn it back on.
You should. Yeah, go.
So put on the mic.
What's that?
That's your one.
Oh, that's the only one. Sorry. I was like, why are there two in here? I saw two in the folder.
That one's the original one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the original one. This is the.
I just put it in there so he wants to see it.
I didn't. All of a sudden, I realized.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I was trying to figure out what was different between the two. So it was helpful to have the original.
Zoom in a little bit. A little bit easier to. All right, well, I can't.
Can't zoom in full screen.
I can't. Yeah, sorry about that.
All right, we'll just zoom it down, right?
I'm just going to try to zoom in a little bit so you can see that. Okay, there you go.
Okay, my name is Jim Neva from Dunne McKenzie. We brought back this plan because the land court, I brought it to the land court. They decided that they didn't like the positioning of the monumentation of the of the of the record points. We didn't change any of the property lines, but we just had to re-rotate and re-rotate according to, you know, so we made the 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 record monuments. The offsets are a little bit different. They just asked us to come back and get it re-signed. So, you know, this is the third time that we we've been in front of the board because every time you go to the land court, they find something else different. So and you'll notice that this plan is smaller than the others because they said, oh, we don't need all that other stuff right now.
Oh, wow. So the plan is so the property lines are the same, frontage is the same, everything's the same?
Yeah. Yep.
And you've been here, sitting here for two hours for this?
It's all right. I learned a lot.
Oh, goodness. Oh, God.
So the so so which monuments had to be moved then?
Uh, they wanted us to hold, um, hold the monument twenty-three, which is up on the left hand corner, right up there with a line.
Yep.
With a line going down to the southeast, they'll hold that line and call the other monuments out that that are on the corners. They're their pins that were found in the field. So they this is this is their best interpretation of of what we should do.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Sometimes you just got to jump through hoops to get to the end result. Okay. I don't have any comments.
I think it looks lovely. That looks exactly the same as it did last time to me.
No.
But I don't work at the land court, so.
Chris, any comments?
Nope, good to go.
Okay. So any any comments from anybody on Zoom or in the room? All right, I think we we're ready to make a motion. So we need a motion to to endorse this revised A and R plan as of what was the date on this drawing? I guess it's the twenty-ninth. So the the drawing as presented for dated and signed on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
I'm not seeing that date you're talking about. I see I see eleven seventeen.
It's on a seal.
Uh, yep, it's actually revised eleven seventeen.
That's what I see.
Where do you see that?
In the revision block?
Oh, in the revision block? Okay.
You want the revision date or the stamp date?
Probably the revision date.
Okay, so about a friendly amendment to that motion to revise that date to the land court comment date as of November seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Did you second it the first time?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
You did.
Just making sure.
Did you state the property as well?
Oh, I did.
Thirty-seven dash forty-three Lake Shore Drive.
Now, I'm not sure if I did or not, so I'll make another second friendly amendment to put in the address of thirty-seven dash forty-three Lake Shore Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right. We will do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have them endorse those plans, Jimmy, tonight before they leave. All right, I'll see you tomorrow. See you tomorrow.
Next item, we want to go in order, Rich, or do you have?
Uh, sure. Yep, because Mr. Pantone is here, so.
Okay, Seventeen Shire Drive?
Yep.
Request for extension of temporary occupancy.
Yeah, so quickly, you originally grant an extension till December.
Yep.
We have made some progress in terms of Shire. We've got the bond since last time Mr. Pantone was in, telling me appropriate the money. We need to proceed the next step to get an assessment of Shire and then do the modification for Shire Industrial Park, which affects Mr. Pantone's property, which is the was just sitting with a temporary cul-de-sac on his. So what he was asking to do when I spoke to Bob was separate out the occupancy permit for the building separate from the site. So Bob would like to get a better sense of what's going to happen with the subdivision, how it's going to be modified before separating them out. So I think I recommended extending this to May. I'm working on the scheduled meeting with town council to kind of go over the next steps. I've reached out to the original designer of the subdivision to meet with them, potentially to hire them to do the work that we would need to do to the subdivision modification. So we should have some answers shortly, the next month or so. And then then you could then have a better path forward what we're doing with the there is a bond in place for the remaining work. His drive coming down the cul-de-sac is completely integrated with what happens with that cul-de-sac. But we haven't got to that point yet. So I think I said May. Give us a little bit of time and finish this some way, one way or the other. Did you were you able to get the enclosure done?
Unique situation that I think it makes a lot of sense.
No, we need but need to drill down to figure out how we're going to ravel this thing to make it work. So he's.
And I'd sleep better at night if the building could be separated from the finished work and the bond outside as far as my occupancy permit goes.
Yeah, that's that's a that's a good approach as well. I like that. But but you said Bob's not willing to.
Not ready yet. He wants to get his action plan. So we've got some work to do.
I understand.
Be able to get back to him to tell you what's going to happen next.
So Bob wants a more detailed plan. So the recommendation is to keep them both together for now?
For now.
And then address it in May.
Yeah.
Okay.
I suggest a May.
Give some more time.
Yeah.
Yep. It's about six months, five-ish, five, six months. Okay. I am, yeah, I'm fine with that. Any any other comments from the board? Chris, anything out there on Zoom?
Also.
Okay. All right. So any other comments from anybody in the room or on Zoom? I see no hands raised. So I think we need a so we need a motion to extend the temporary occupancy permit for Seventeen Shire Drive through May?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Chris Monfort? You're muted.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have on Zoom Dan American for the next A and R plan.
So next item of business is Sixth Sharon Avenue, the A and R plan. And Betsy does have that on the screen. And you said, who do we have on Zoom?
Dan American.
Okay, Dan. Okay. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dan American with.
Uh, Dan American with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the property owner, the Moses. The A&R plan that you see before you is for Sixth Sharon's Ave. It's in the Communal Off-Highway District, C1B. Uh, they have a little extra land area. And the, the, the abiding property at Fourth Sharon's Ave is intending to purchase that additional land area. So, the A&R plan is to carve off Parcel A, which is 3,601 square feet, and leave the remaining Lot 18B for the house. Zoning requires 30,000 square feet of lot area. The Lot 18B has 31,590. Zoning requires 100 feet of frontage, and the Lot 18B has slightly more than 153 feet of frontage. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so you're moving the line to the left, which is the kind of north, okay?
Wait, where do you see the left?
I was thinking, is it to the right?
Well, it says.
Left.
Oh, I see.
It says existing, existing lot line.
And that's gonna move over, okay.
And you're moving it on the drawing to the left to the proposed lot line.
Yep.
So, they just get a little extra space, got it?
So.
Right, we're taking about 20 feet off the right side of the property and carving it out as a unbuildable parcel.
And you, and you had said then, who, who is looking to purchase that?
The owners of Fourth Sharon's Ave, which is the property to the right.
Okay, gotcha.
Dedham Street Realty.
Dedham Street Realty LLC.
Yep. Yep, I see that on the plan now. Okay.
Is it, this has nothing to do with the lines or anything, but is it Sharon Ave or Sharon's Ave?
Well, I just learned something. I thought it was Sharon, but I guess it's Sharon's, huh?
I think it's depicted, uh, in different ways on different plans.
Oh, boy.
Seeing in, in Google Maps, it's Sharon Ave.
Right.
Because I just pulled it up on Google Maps and it said Sharon Ave. Is that kind of like Foxborough and Foxborough? Can be spelled two different ways?
And is it Sharon's with an apostrophe S?
That causes issues.
The record, the record plan that precedes this Lot 18A has Sharon's with an apostrophe in it, Ave. So, I think, I think it's a couple of different ways depending on where you look.
I'm assuming that'll all get kind of worked out at Land Court.
Sharon Ave.
Does it have to go to Land Court?
No, singular.
It was the last name, the people, it was Sharon was the last name of the people that I think.
Singular in here, it's plural.
Yep. I didn't mean it.
Here it's.
All right.
No, those are all Reese's Pieces things because of where the apostrophe is, like you're, you're eating Reese's Pieces, like they're not yours.
Okay, well, the lot lines look.
The lot lines are good.
The lot lines look fine.
We can't fix the name of the script at the moment, but.
Okay.
Our records are showing it as Sharon, but.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, this looks pretty straightforward.
Anyone on the board have any other questions? Rich, do you have any concerns about it?
No.
Okay. Uh, Chris, do you have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve or endorse the A&R plan for Sixth Sharon's Avenue as, what is this?
Dated November 10th.
Dated November 10th, 2023.
So, moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris Montfort?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. You are good to go.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, Dan.
Good night.
Okay.
Meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 6th as, uh, printed?
So, moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, I actually, I think you made the, you made the motion, so I just need a second. So, do you want a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
All right. So, Eric made the motion, Gary seconded. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris Montfort?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Town planner updates.
All right, so, and top of the order is just, is discussion going through the housing choice multifamily overlay district. Um, there's really, for tonight, we, uh, Town Council, uh, Tom Harrington, Marissa Miller are with us this evening. There's really three parts to discuss for tonight. Um, one is the overlay bylaw itself, um, then the location, district, proposed district area. And then, the third piece is repealing the inclusionary bylaw based off the last month's discussion to make it, uh, comply with housing choice. Last week, I met with, with Marissa and Tom to go through, um, the draft. And so, I'll highlight some of the discussion points and they're available, obviously, to, to talk about those. What I did was I took the, um, MBTA Communities had a sample guidebook that I forwarded, I think I shared with you before, it's kind of the template of what you need to do in terms of, to structure the bylaw. And I, I looked at that and then, and then took a look in terms of our own bylaw, where we would place it, how it would fit and integrate it together. So, um, this will create a new section, 310-8.5. One of the discussions last week is to, um, maybe come up with a, a better name than MCMOD. So, you know, open to, uh, you know, we could discuss that. Um, the one thing that's, so, just as we kind of have that discussion, you could think about this. Unless someone is aware of it, Norfolk Town Center that I am aware or not, doesn't have a unique name like some town centers might have, um, that you could identify, so there's as we, I know I'm jumping ahead, but there's really two district areas. One is the center of town. The other one is, uh, the C1D, which is in the Pondville area. So, Pondville has a name. So, we could have a unique identification for it. If somebody comes forward with some neat idea, we could put it in there as how we would identify it. Not a big lift, but just food for thought. That was one comment, and I don't need an answer tonight if you, if you don't have the answer, but just as we go through that. Um, the other thing is in the purpose section, taking some and, and tail them a little bit more so they fit with Norfolk in terms of the purpose sections. I did get to see, they shared Littleton, who, uh, actually voted down, correct? They didn't pass theirs.
Correct.
Wait, which, what?
The town of Littleton.
Okay.
That was the sample?
No, it's just they had, they had a little more localized purpose provisions to put in ours, so I'm gonna come back to you with those, a couple of them, but, um, so that's one thing that we discussed. So, I'm gonna walk you through it. The next session, section is establishment and applicability. As you had recommended back in May, you wanted to, if you recall, it was a bigger casted area in terms of a potential district. Based on the recommendations from the May Town meeting, uh, Horsa went and came back with a condensed, um, area in terms of recommended for the overlay district. As I just mentioned, one is, and I have a, uh, but maybe it might be easier to just, I have a PowerPoint presentation, maybe as we're talking about it, it might be, um, I might just share my screen with a PowerPoint presentation, so. So, let me just. Could you just, um, Betsy, allow me to screen share?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, the first slide is again just a summation of what, uh, the MBTA, it came through the Housing Choice Bill, it's called the MBTA Communities Law. It was interchangeable, but it's a high-density multifamily district of 15 units per acre or more. As you can read, I don't have to read it to you, but it's there for illustrative purposes. On that same slide is what I mentioned earlier, um, the recommendations that came from the May meeting was to, uh, reduce the scope of the C1 and remove the B1 core, keeping it with the, the B outer core, um, and remove some of the other areas, which include some residential properties. And then, there was two areas in terms of the Pondville area. So, this, I'm just gonna jump to this one. So, this is the revised recommended area, which coincides with the B1 outer district, which is that.
So, you're, it's the.
It's within the green area, yeah, the.
Well, with a green outline.
Greened outline, but that red or red, I guess.
Brighter red.
The brighter red. So, this here and this, and you can see my cursor moving, but this area here, um, this red.
Can't see your cursor.
I'm blind.
No, I can't even see it.
Is there a cursor on there?
Yeah, every once in a while it pops up.
Yeah, sorry.
Only on the dark red.
Okay.
All right, well. The yellow is new?
Uh, no.
No.
Nope, that's the residential.
There's like a highlighted green.
Yeah, the green. How about we go to this slide?
There's a blue line there.
Does that help you?
If you draw it on a whiteboard.
Yeah.
It's impossible to see that screen.
I agree with you. The lights right above it just cause a horrible glare for all of us up here, but.
If I can pull it up.
But that's okay. Ah, there we go. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm zooming. Is that better?
Yes.
All right, so I'm.
I can at least see the green.
So, I did notice I didn't connect the line there, so just imagine on, on the far end of that seven over here, voice crossing is.
Yep.
It connects it.
Okay.
But, so it's not completely the whole entire outer B1 because.
Nope.
You see there's some outliers, but this is, coincides with the, the B1. And then this is not contiguous, but it's larger than five acres, so that can be, uh, considered an area as far as the overlay district. And then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom out and then come back in. This one's probably a little bit easier to see.
That's easier to see. So, that is, C1D is.
Pondville?
That's Pondville.
Yeah.
Yep. So, Hill Street, Valley Street, um, the rail line, abandoned rail line to the, to the right hand side with a, a yellow, lighter yellow is the residential district. So, I'm gonna switch back, um, to the, uh, the bylaw itself as I screen share, so we talk. So, I'll, uh, just. Okay, so, back on the screen, as I said, this will be a new section, establishment and applicability. That's the total area for, um, so it's 80 acres in size. If you recall, they ran the model, we had to beat the minimum of 750 units of unit capacity. They ran the model based on the underlying lot area sizes, heights, setbacks, et cetera, to get to that, to get to the, to make sure to hit the target of, uh, the unit capacity. Uh, in order to meet the unit capacity based on our bylaws and setbacks, it needs to be at 18 units per acre. So, it's higher than the 15, but that's based on doing the math in terms of running it through the model, so I just wanna note that. And this is where, um, we can identify the overlay districts in terms of their uniqueness to call them out. So, that's a future thing, I would add it into this section here, the applicability section, um, and establishment of the district. The next component to this is the permanent uses. As we know, um, recap, this, this statute requires standalone multifamily housing as, as its single use in terms of type. Yes, we have mixed use, but that doesn't comply with the statute, which requires it as its own standalone use.
And that's why we excluded it from the B1 inner.
And that's why it was excluded from the B1 inner.
But that had changed.
What's that?
But that had changed, that they were gonna allow mixed use.
So, they allow mixed use, which is called a mandatory mixed-use district. What it does do is reduces your total unit capacity for allowing mixed-use development. However, in our case, we're not gonna be able to meet that provision because we require parking. In order to meet that mandatory mixed-use requirement, we, we cannot require parking for the commercial uses. That's one of the provisions of it. In addition to that, um, the zoning, just the bylaw that we have, which is that, uh, when you do the split between commercial and residential, we have a higher commercial requirement under that than the mandatory mixed use. So, we're not, we're not able to utilize that provision. In addition to that, we really, in essence, in our town center, it's, it's a town center that's really not built out.
Right.
You know, we're, we're hoping and we wanna see mixed-use development, but it's not existing, um, which is another caveat to that mandatory mixed-use district. So, anyway, we can't, we can't utilize it. It doesn't change the area, it just changes ultimate unit capacity number, but it's not applic, we can't use it because we don't meet the provisions. Um, I have the slideshow, if you want, we can, I can go through that with you later. So, again, the dimensional requirements here are gonna be the same as the underlying district, uh, with the exception, the dwelling units per acre has to jump up to 18 units per acre in order to meet the, um, the unit capacity numbers. Next is off-street parking. We just have, it's gonna, we have it, we have, our off-street parking is 1.5 units per multifamily unit. That's fine. So, we're just making reference to, um, our provision, which has parking requirements. There's some shared parking that you can use in both the B1 and the C1 districts, so we're referencing both of those sub-districts, which is the 9-6, um, and 10.6. The other section, 6.7, is the, the parking table in terms of what the uses are, ex-use parking, et cetera. And 6.8 is the loading space, uh, loading zone requirements within our zone, so we're referencing those. Site plan review, we already have in place. Discussions with council last week is that our site plan review requires a super-majority vote, which is four out of five. We did discuss that, that. We did discuss that, that most likely we'll need to look at that to revise it to a majority vote. The good news, I guess, in our case is that that vote is really kinda silent within the, when the site plan approval, but it's specifically spelled out in your rules and regulations. So I just, and I'm gonna have town council kind of provide their commentary too. Just wanna work, run through this all for you first. But we need to make that change. It may just need to be done in the rules and regulations. We'll get to affordable housing, that's G. And then H is your standard severability. That, no, I'm sorry, yes. Clause. There are some definitions that in the guidebook suggest that we have. Because we went through the whole re-codification, I know some towns are actually putting it within the bylaw. So, but now we've, we've shifted out how we structure our zoning bylaws. So we have a definition section, but there are some specific definitions that we may need to adopt that are specific to the overlay district, not townwide. But there are some that might be applicable to both. So we will have some definitions that will just be applicable to the overlay district, but they're gonna be in section two point one. And then there'll be a couple that will be applicable that we could just generally adopt, which are okay, which are worthwhile to adopt. I know it's a little confusing, so this is our first run, okay? But just, so you understand that, that's one of the things, and this is a list of those definitions. We will need to amend section three one to establish the overlay district. So that will be a, it's really more administrative in terms of putting it in its place so that we know that it references an overlay district. That's, that should be an easy lift of all this stuff, but that's one of the things that we. So what I'd like to do is just pause and yield to town council to just kind of touch on the points that I recapped on the first part of this with the bylaw, to add your thoughts.
Good evening.
Yep, Marissa, let me just tee you up. So Tom Harrington and Marissa Miller, nice to see you all. So we did have a conversation with Rich last week about this, and we're working our way through it with, with comments, and we'll get you detailed comments in the near future. For this meeting, I think Marissa can kind of walk you through our initial thoughts and take any feedback you're willing to share. So take it away, Marissa.
Thanks, Tom. Rich covered some of these in his comments, but going back to the beginning of the bylaw, I think one of the most important things that stood out to me is making the bylaw personal to Norfolk. You know, the, the draft that we have is based off of the model bylaw that the state provided. So I think just tweaking some of these sections, particularly the purpose, and, you know, thinking about the vision for Norfolk and for, you know, the C1 area, the Palmville area, as Rich has described it, and then also kind of the center of town and however you want to identify that and what the long-term goals are and how those goals can be tied into the purpose of this overlay district. Some other comments I had, let's see, just jumping down to definitions section. Some of these definitions I don't think are necessary to include in the bylaw. And then one I think that needs a closer look is building coverage. There's a proposed definition for building coverage, but the bylaw already has a definition for lot coverage, which is a little bit different than what building coverage would cover. But then if you look at the proposed MBTA zoning, building coverage isn't really addressed anywhere in this draft. So it almost isn't necessary to have as a definition, or if there is going to be a separate standard for building coverage within this overlay district, it needs to be provided somewhere in the bylaw. So it might be something to think about, just, you know, what does that look like? Is it going to be a different percentage than lot coverage as already provided in the bylaw? So I think it's just what you envision as controls for lot coverage and if it would differ. Another point I wanted to make was the definition of mixed use. So the proposed definition of mixed use includes mixing residential with industrial uses. You know, that might need to be narrowed a little bit and tailored better because it might not be desirable to have residential mixed with, you know, say, manufacturing in the same building. So that's just something to take into consideration. I think those were some of the main points that I had, which is tweaking some of those definitions and seeing how, you know, how this overlay would specifically apply within the existing bylaw. So those were my main points.
On the mixed-use one, yeah, I'm reading that. It's, I mean, I, I see what you're saying because it's very, very broad, commercial, institutional, industrial, and other uses. I mean, could you just, could you just add to the end of that, just say, as allowed by, by zoning? Because even though that definition is there, if, if it's not, if it's not allowed use in that zoning district, it, it doesn't apply anyway.
It wouldn't apply if it's not an allowed use in that zoning district, but query if you leave it open to just, you know, and other uses. It is very broad, so.
Right.
You know, if a laboratory or manufacturing plant were allowed, arguably someone could try to permit a building, you know, that has both residential and maybe a manufacturing plant within the same building, and that might not be desirable.
I tailor it down. I think we don't wanna, we, we don't wanna leave too much of an opening there.
Yeah. But it definitely needs some work. Yeah. Definitely needs to be.
To emphasize that point, we have within our, in our use table, mixed use.
Right.
But that's not.
This is mixed-use development.
Yeah, and this is different than what's contemplated there. In our bylaw, it's more office and retail and mixing of uses, not maybe the more traditional term of mixed use, which is residential, commercial, so. The other side. So just to, what I, just to add a point, what I wanted to do is show you what we started with, so then they can draft, so you can see what the, where their comments are coming from, from the draft, so.
Right, so this is the draft from the MBTA, is that?
No, this is our draft.
This is our.
It's our draft, but just that I went through the draft with town council's office. So instead of handing you over an edited version of what their comments, you can kind of see the progression of it.
Got you.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I, I think what we were, we're looking to do is kind of give you the range of opportunities and then, you know, kind of learn from the board how you'd like to tailor this. And, you know, by that, I mean, are your goals for this bylaw to satisfy the state requirement, which is certainly one way to approach it? Are there other things you're trying to accomplish within that framework? And I think what we wanna do is make sure that we, we kind of produce exactly what you want to do without more than that.
I understand, okay. And I think, you know, one of our, I mean, I think there's several goals there, and one of them is, yes, we wanna be in compliance. We also, and I think we've, we also want to, we've already done that, exclude that, that B1 inner core. We've already done that.
Do you, so there are, I do, I do see there are some folks that want to offer some comments about the, the district, probably more so than the bylaw per se, but there might be interrelated, so. If, which I think we'll do is I'll go back to the PowerPoint presentation, so you can.
Yep.
Which will help.
I, I prompted ChatGPT on the identifier piece, see what some good names are, so. I'll just email that list around, it's pretty.
Nice.
Pretty good.
You got, you got a list?
Yeah, sure. There's things like Norfolk Commons and Cobblestone Crossing and.
Oh, all right.
Railway Junction.
Cobblestone.
Cobblestone.
Junction. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Just let me back to my, why am I not? Some, some technical difference, so bear with me.
So I'm just, I'm scrolling through this. I mean, so there are several articles that we'd be proposing.
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about the other, during the meeting last week was actually breaking these into parts in terms of, did I just go off Zoom?
You're still on Zoom?
Window happy here. Yes, what we discussed was the, really the pieces which account for the overlay aspect of it. So the bylaw and the districts and all those components together in one article. And then the inclusionary separate.
Okay.
And so we could talk about this, you know, pros and cons, but I think bundling them would, you know, you might, might double.
No, I'm just, I'm just going through it, that's fine.
Yeah.
Hey, Rich, quick question.
Yeah, here we go.
Have we shared this yet with MAPC with regards to the master plan and making sure that the overlays are going to work in Congress with what we're trying to plan?
We hasn't as of yet, but we will.
Are we going to do that anytime soon?
Yeah, we can do that essentially after tonight, for sure.
Okay.
Yes. Can you see the map again? All right, so the map's back.
But I think we're, we're all kind of quiet, we're all digesting this. It's a lot to digest.
No, no, I understand. So the folks online or on Zoom that wanna speak up about their property, now's your forum, identify yourself.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name's Andrew Hayes, I represent Eastern Real Estate. We own Seventy-Nine Liberty Lane. You know, I think ultimately my question is around kind of better understanding some of the thoughts around excluding the B1 district from the overlay. I mean, I think first and foremost, you know, it's been really helpful this evening to hear the town's latest thinking around different ways to, you know, encourage development, build and grow and encourage vibrancy within, within the town holistically. And one of the things that, you know, I think aligns with that is continuing to lean into opportunities for development within that kind of B1 area. And when, you know, from my perspective, and I'm by no means an expert on the MBTA zoning overlay, but, you know, it does seem that there's a lot of insistencies with what the state is aiming to accomplish and what that, you know, geographic focus and certain proximity, certainly the proximity to the train system provides. And while I recognize, you know, there are some conflicting constraints with the underlying zoning as it reads today, you know, I guess I'd like to better understand the thought process on, you know, I guess how those goals for the, for the area overall align with removing those, those areas from consideration in the MBTA overlay. You know, I think just, one, one note is, you know, I think the biggest constraint that we see is that when you impose a thirty-five percent commercial requirement on development in that area, you're really limiting, limiting, excuse me, the, the opportunity for development. You know, I think that's, that's a fairly significant density of retail. And as we've seen over the years, you know, the scale of retail has changed significantly. So trying to, you know, marry, marry the demand where, where it exists is one of the key things that, you know, we are thinking about as we look at that, that opportunity.
But I think it was just pretty, pretty simple, and, you know, I appreciate that, thank you. We did talk about excluding the, the B1 inner core because it, because this overlay district did not allow any mixed use. And that was, so it was not in alignment with, with the goals for the B1 zoning district. And so because of that, then it would be all, all residential. And that just was, was against the, it just kind of, it contradicted the goals of that B1 district.
I mean, creating the B1 district was years in the making, you know, with so many people in town, much like the master plan process that we're going through now. It was, you know, feedback from everybody in the town, what they wanted to see in the town. I can tell you one thing that nobody in this town wants to see, which is apartments on that property across from Walgreens, unless there's going to be some mixed use, you know, some businesses below. So a lot of our research for the master plan has been with small business owners in town and people who weren't able to find property for commercial in town. So they've gone outside of town, you know, Franklin or Rentham. And so when we talk to them, they say, you know, we really need to have like smaller shops. We don't wanna have a huge, you know, none of them are really to the scale where they need a huge restaurant space right now. They really just wanted kind of like micro-business locations that they are not able to find in town right now, and they would like to be able to find them in town. So that one area, the B1, is pretty much our, that is our only downtown. There's not a lot of space there. And from what people say in the town, they wanna have small shops, small businesses, not necessarily the apartments that we're gonna be kind of forced to have now in that area.
Sure.
If I.
Right, so, you know, that, that's helpful context. And, you know, the only thing that I would, I would note is the density of retail that the current zoning would prescribe is somewhere in the order of magnitude of, you know, thirty-five to forty-five thousand square feet. So that doesn't really align with kind of what I'm understanding is, is the demand. And, and, you know, I, I certainly can't speak to the specifics of the MBTA. You know, I did ask my counterpart, John, to join, and he's certainly much more familiar with the MBTA zoning. So, you know, John, feel free to, to jump in on, on any of those points specifically. But, I mean, I did wanna make sure, you know, we're highlighting that, that density because I think that is a critical consideration as you think about, you know, what you're trying to encourage ultimately and what the zoning, you know, in practice would, would bring.
Yep, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, hi. My, my name's Stefan Frye, I own Fifteen Rockwood Road. I'm a developer. I just developed a property in Foxborough, Twenty-Nine Thirty-One Wall Street. And I was just gonna echo what Andrew said. I, I think the, the zoning is extremely rigid and restrictive with this thirty-five, excuse me, sixty-five scale, which really just does not allow for development in that, in that B1 core district, which I think you're seeing, the proof is in the pudding. You're not, you're not getting developers interested in, excuse me, doing projects. So I think that's, that's, that's a challenge.
Out of curiosity, what, what do you think would be a more reasonable split?
Honestly, I think it should be discretionary to, to, to be, to be totally honest, I think it should be discretionary. I think Foxborough, I think, did a, did a great job in recognizing the need for residential in their downtown. It's kind of the chicken or the egg scenario. You have to have residential to create.
Sure.
You know, vibrancy and people going to shops and going to restaurants and, and. You know, vibrancy and people going to shops and going to restaurants and, and they did create an overlay district. This is prior to the Section 3A zoning. And their intent was just that, to get people to live in the downtown area. And they're doing it. You know, I just developed 50, 50 market rate apartments and we did not have any cap or ceiling or floor on the amount of commercial we had to do. We just had to comply with the mixed use zoning. We had to do mixed use and we did. And we built a, a separate, a separate building of, I think it's 4,600 square feet of commercial space. And I will say that 15, 16 months later, after marketing that commercial space, I still have half of that space that's available. And I would argue that that's a, a better location than my property in Norfolk, which is 15 Rockwood Road. You know, I think that specific property here in Norfolk, I mean, if you dropped a pin on a property anywhere, there's not a property that would comply or, or meet the intent of the, of the state's Section 3A zoning more than 15 Rockwood Road. You can literally walk across the, the tracks and be on the platform. And yet, 15 Rockwood Road is not in, inside the map that's currently drafted, which I find incredible.
Yeah, I think that the, what we're kind of up against though, or what our challenge here is that if you said to somebody, do you want to see, you know, anybody in this town when we have the conversations, if you said, do you want to see mixed use in the, in the way that you see it, the way that you're describing it, where it's, you know, an apartment building separate from a business?
Well, it could be either or. It doesn't have to be separate. We just happen to do it that way. But it, it can be either or. But the, you're, the restrictions you guys have on, 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 on the mixed use piece of your zoning is so rigid and restrictive that it's so prohibitive for anybody like myself to want to do something that makes sense. It's, the scale is so out of whack with what is, what the demand is, and it becomes cost prohibitive. Like I, like I'm, I guess I'm trying to tell you, like, we, we did mixed use in Foxborough. We did it well. And yet I still have 2,300 square feet that we can't lease out. So it's a better location than what we have and, what I have in Norfolk. And yet I'm going to be, I think I'm going to be, I'm going to have to, if I'm going to do a development there, I would have to comply with the 3565 rule or the, if it's going to be one building, my understanding, if I'm correct, is it's got to be the footprint, if I do one building, the entire first floor would have to be commercial.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is good information. This is great feedback. So on that, that property in Foxborough, you've, you've rented out about half of your commercial. How many are your residential units? What's the percentage that you've rented out of that after 16 months?
It's full.
Full, okay.
Yeah. It's 50, it's 50, it's 50 apartments, 25 one beds, 25 two beds.
Okay.
But.
What are the, the sizes of the commercial? Is it for small businesses? I'm not familiar with that area.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's literally, it's, you guys could drive there in six minutes. It's, 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 it's 4,600 square feet in total, basically split it right down the middle. We've got Joe's Meat and Seafood Market in there that just moved in. He just, he just opened, I think, four weeks ago. And he's doing great. And, you know, we, we have some other interest in that space of a dentist, a chiropractic, PT office, and some other uses. But, you know, it's, it, it has been a challenge to get that space leased.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I would, I would strongly encourage the, the board to reconsider, you know, parts of the B1 core district. Obviously, certainly, like the other, the other thing with 15 Rockwood Road is it's, it's the only B1 core district property, for some reason, on the other side of the tracks, no pun intended. It, it just is literally on the other side of the tracks of the, of the B1 core district.
That's right.
And it, you know, if I'm gonna, if I were to have to comply with the, the zoning bylaws today and encourage commercial, the in and out right there is not great to begin with. And I'm going to have daily in and out commercial traffic going, you know, in and out of that site. It'd be, it'd be a much more benign traffic use if it was just, whatever it is, 14 apartments, you know, 12 apartments, whatever, whatever it ends up being.
Okay.
Just, so I think I wrote this down right, but I just want to confirm. In Foxborough, 29 to 31 Wall Street, I just, I want to.
Yeah.
Pop by there and go get.
Yeah, if anybody wants to come by, I'm happy to meet, meet members of the board there, walk you through the project. More than happy to do that.
Okay, yep.
Similarly, you know, we'd be happy to engage in further conversations, kind of talk through our experience in different municipalities, you know, with the retail market more broadly. So, you know, happy to make ourselves available for further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Peter Chipman, speaking tonight on 201 Main Street, which was also removed from consideration. You know, Chad, we have walked that site with board members, prior board members. I just cannot make any sense of the 35%. I mean, if it's a look that you want, you know, driving down the main street in a small town in New England and, you know, keeping that streetscape look, you can still create that. But going up to 35% and given the, we don't have to go to the numbers that Stefan just shared with you. It just makes it a nonstarter, especially if you're limited to the number of residential units, which you're going to be subsidizing, you know, this loss leader. And on top of that, what are we talking about? We're talking about office, we're talking about retail, and they're both dead markets. It's, it's a very, it's a very difficult number to hit. And that's the reason why, even when it was free money for five years straight, you know, that this town didn't get developed out.
Yeah, I think there's also a disconnect too between, and the, maybe it's, you know, we need to look more into the 3565. But I think there's also a disconnect because we talked to a lot of small business owners that are in town that can't find spaces. So they're leaving the town because there, there aren't resident, there aren't retail spaces. You know, bakeries, smaller restaurants, coffee shops, places like that. And they don't want to leave the town, but there's nowhere for them to go in town with anything that's built now. So that, I think, is also the disconnect too, is that we hear this from the developers, but then we also hear from small business owners, like they would love to have a business here, but they can't because there's.
Yeah, but there's one thing on paying a monthly rent, there's another thing developing an entire set.
Sorry.
It's also, it's also the reason, it's also the reason that an across the board bylaw in a downtown area doesn't work. Because it should be discretionary on, because every property is different. Every property has a unique feature. So some properties in the B1 core district may very well be perfect mixed use properties. And that'd be the great use for that. But in others, they don't make sense. But you guys have no authority to sit down and make an educated decision on property by property basis, because you guys don't have discretion. You have to, you have to live by the 6535 rule. And it's just, it's a nonstarter.
And the pushback.
And you do have to have housing for people in the downtown to, to live and, and support the, the businesses that are already there too. Like that's.
Right. That was a big part of the B1. We had developers come and talk about that, that you absolutely need the residential to support the businesses, or the businesses won't survive. Yeah.
Yeah, they, they both have to work in dichotomy. I don't know who, who said the chicken or the egg, but that's exactly what it is. It's, you got to have both. And right now, we really don't have a lot of anything. I mean, we, well, we don't have a lot of residential.
We have a lot of residential. That's the whole town.
Yeah.
But I think that's, you know.
But in the core, we don't have a lot.
So that's why I guess, I think a lot of us are here wondering, Mr. Chairman, why the B1 inner cores completely excluded from the Section 3A mandatory stuff?
We did that to be, I mean, I'll be honest, we did that so that we were in alignment with the goals of the, of the B1 zoning, the B1 inner core zoning district. And so we were trying to be mindful of that and respectful of those, those goals. And this is great information. And I, I will say that, you know, times change. And if, we only voted that in a few years ago, the B1 zoning district, but if we think back, a lot of the groundwork that went in, all the research and groundwork that went into that B1 zoning district discussions was all pre-COVID.
Right.
We voted on it in COVID, if I recall correctly. But times have dramatically changed since COVID. And, and I, I, I won't go too, too deep into this, but it might be worth taking a second look at, should we, is it the right thing to do to exclude all of it? I mean, we blindly, I'll be honest, we blindly excluded all of it just because we wanted to be respectful of that goal.
The goal, the, yeah, from.
That was previously set.
In the town, yeah.
Was it 3A or?
But Chad, I am, I'm, I'm at a loss here. I don't know what you have changed in the B1 district. You said you, I mean, I was on the planning board, as you will know.
Yep.
And, I mean, I spent 16 years on these boards. And I, I'm lost. What, what has changed in the, in the B1 district?
Well, we created, we did that whole B1.
For how much?
Yeah, we, I mean, we allow more residential density. We have the requirement for commercial, but we also allow slightly higher building. We, there's less parking requirements there. What are the other changes that we made?
Yeah, those are the changes that were made from the 21. The height got up to three stories. It wasn't three stories previously. The, the parking.
Ratio was reduced.
Ratio was reduced whereby the board could waive parking where it wasn't required.
Can I ask you a question?
You could.
Huh? Has there been any new development in those last three years?
We knew there wouldn't be because there's no infrastruc, there's no water infrastructure in place for it. It's a long game.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
I think that's one piece of it, but that's not, that's not, that's not going to restrict everyone from doing development. I mean.
I think it was water, sewer, and then the, the, the parking piece as well.
No, I know.
I've never found the parking schedule to be that prohibitive. And I, I mean, the, the skeptic, that can be handled. Anyone that owns or buys into this knows that. I think that's something they understand going in. You know, it's not, it's not an excuse for someone to say, yes, it's probably exactly what you don't want, is having a sewer so someone can come in and put in a huge development that you clearly don't want. And neither do I, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm up on 30 years here. It's, yeah, those, you know, incremental changes were helpful, but they weren't major game changers.
Well, this is great feedback to hear. I mean, it's been three, almost three years now since, well, two and a half, since it was approved. And you're right, there hasn't been any development since then.
You know, not everybody wants to step back and just drop a 40B, you know?
Right.
Rather say harbor, I could do that tomorrow. That has never been my intention to go that route. I'd rather try to find a way, you know, so it makes sense for both of us.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I mean, it's kind of the, like I was saying before, you have, we have the conversations with the developers and the small business owners. We don't have them together. I feel like we could, you know, so much could be ironed out if we could just get people together and, you know, figure it out, figure it out from a developer's perspective, what's not working. You know, figure it out from the small business owner. What are you missing?
Right.
And, you know, try to come up with something that makes sense. If the 6535 doesn't work, then, you know, maybe we look at revising that. But we're going to need a, you know, a lot of research put into that, why we want to change it when it was just put into it, you know?
I don't know. You, you have a great person to speak with. Rich McCarthy went through it in Dedham when they completely changed their percentages in the center of, in Dedham Center. And it revitalized a lot of old development down there before Rich came to Norfolk.
I agree. I loved it down there. I lived.
I don't know why you need a percentage to begin with.
Yeah.
There should be, it should be discretionary. It should be at the board's discretion.
I think we need to rewrite that entire line under the allowed usage, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, we can, I mean, this is, this is great feedback. This is excellent.
But one more thing, just, I just, because I think what's, so it's not lost here is that, the problem is like to get, we all know that to get that changed, to get your zoning bylaw changed, is somewhat of an undertaking.
A heavy lift.
Certainly in, in Norfolk.
Yes.
So to have the opportunity to sort of implement some of those ideas using the Section 3A zoning overlay is a good opportunity, I think, for the board to consider having some of that in there and not just exclude the entire B1 core.
Yep.
You know, and, I mean, if you, you're reviewing plans, and I know that based on your HW consulting, you know, they made it, they made it fit 3A. Okay, the 40%, and they put in whatever was necessary within the half mile. But, you know, anybody at the state level sitting there is saying, look, every one of the pieces around the half mile are brand new construction, so there's never going to be any multifamily there, or the oldest one being up on the hill, the condos, which are 20 years old. But they're going to sit back and just say, you know, Norfolk gained it. And even if all the other towns in the 495 area are doing it, what's that going to trigger? Them taking another bite at the apple at the state level? They may change it again.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they do over time when, when you don't plan proactively, right? That's why 40B is what it is today. You know, when the state comes over the top, it's because the, the towns have gamed the system for so long and they haven't provided what's needed.
They could rewrite 3A for the MBTA communities. They want, they want development on that spine.
Yep. That's right.
And, you know, if you want to sit back and, you know, be a skeptic, I think Norfolk is a, a template saying, look at all these, 40B still being up, 40B, three years old. It, it's, you know, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate with you guys.
All right. And this is, this is great information. Gives us definitely something to think about. Like, I mean, we, we explained why we excluded it. That was very simple. But it's, doesn't mean that that's our final decision by any means. But it definitely gives us some, some information to go back and revisit all this as we put all this together.
Well, I mean, if you would consider it, and since Stefan verbalized it for his site, I would like to be considered to be added back in.
Yep, we'll, we'll revisit the whole B1 inner core. I mean, can't hurt to, to spend some time.
Which property is yours, Mr. Chipman?
Right across the post office.
201 Main Street, across from the post office.
201 Main Street.
So next to Ivy Music?
Next to the, you know, man.
Yeah.
It's like between Walsh and Ivy Music.
Yeah. There's three acres there.
Okay.
Three frontage, you know, ready to develop tomorrow if I didn't have to live with the 6535. And I actually have a set of plans that Rich has in his files, so.
That the plans from several years ago?
Even updated right to, I mean, Chad, we did a rudimentary walkthrough at that time, it was conceptual. I have it right down to, you know, some submission level if I wanted to pull the trigger.
Okay.
But at 35%, can't make the numbers for it.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else on Zoom?
Yeah, hi. My name is John Byrd, and I work for a large home builder around the greater Boston area. We're currently building eight active residential communities. And I've been in discussions with Andrew. with Andrew about the Stop and Shop parcel. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Frey and Mr. Chipman because they hit on many of the points that I intended to raise with the exclusion of the B one core and the suitability of the B one core for the Section 3A zoning. And I'd just like to add one additional comment. And I was sitting through the description of the town's master plan and the strategic goals from seven to eight and the Stop and Shop parcel and the other B one core parcels, I I've lost count of how many of the factors that they could potentially satisfy in the plan were they to get the Section 3A zoning. So hopefully, as things advance between myself and Andrew, I look forward to speaking to the board further about that and appreciate you taking the time to explain it to us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. This is very helpful.
Anyone else?
Do appreciate you hearing us out, guys.
Yeah.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So we can, well, it's five to 10, so I don't know if you, if you, could you go a little bit more in terms of the, for tonight, in terms of the inclusionary bylaw?
How much more do you have?
I mean, I don't.
We have our draft.
Yeah.
We
I think it'd be good, I don't think, I think we can go through it pretty quickly, so to speak.
Okay.
Hit the high points. How's that?
Let's let's hit the highlights.
Going back to 10% affordable? Yeah.
Yeah.
And that is on?
I don't think it's in here.
Is it in our packet, Betsy?
It's in there.
It is.
Towards the end?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. It is.
Yep.
Yep.
It's the
Too far.
Fourth to last page.
Yeah.
Correct.
Article XX.
Article XX, yeah.
Article XX.
You're funny.
Article 20.
There you go.
Yeah, Article 20.
So if you recall from the, you had, at the November meeting we discussed, there was a letter from the Norfolk Affordable Housing Trust, which recommended to the board to create, not create two separate bylaws in terms of the inclusionary bylaw versus townwide bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
In addition to that, the recommendation was to go back in terms of the straight 10%, not have escalator that was in, in the amendment that happened in 21. And that was part of the, that was the recommendation. There's some pieces that we want to talk about. And back, going back to prior to 21, there would not be the rounding that occurred in 21. So in turn, once you got to the half unit and rounded up, in this bylaw, there would be, it would be rounded down, actually, to comply with housing choice. There are a few other things that I want to just touch on briefly for tonight, just so you understand the difference. There would, there will be some differences from that prior version in 21, which would be, it would not be a special permit process anymore. It'd be administratively handled through staff. Wouldn't, you would not be going, so someone would not be going before the planning board for inclusionary. It would just be straight, when the development comes in, they would adhere to this bylaw, they can, any other bylaw, it'd be administered by the Affordable Housing Director. And and that's how it would be handled. So there wouldn't be a separate permit. And there's, there's, that's the way it's drafted right now. One of the comments the town council made was that for the payment and loo section, that the recommendation would be that the the trust themselves would vote on an annual basis what that median family, single family home price would be for Norfolk. So that way, if somebody wanted, if somebody was going to utilize a payment and loo, that value would be established. So that would happen on an annual basis, most likely in January. So just to recap, when you did the, the previous payment, though, we have one so far, it was the median home price minus the, well, the time was what a affordable unit would be for for sale. At that particular time, the delta between the two was 300,000. So that's going to vary over time. And Susan's role, she does the calculation in terms of the affordable, but that, but they would establish what that median price would be, as opposed to staff doing it. So that was one of the recommendations that they had. And the rest of it is, I mean, it's not, it's pretty straightforward. It still would be, those affordable units would qualify because they would be at 80% area median income. So they would be added to the inventory if they were to be included just the way they were today, if we got them, and just as the previous ones that have happened before in the past. But again, the the big, so I would call it big, which is significant. It wouldn't be a permit that would be administered by the board anymore, be at the staff level. And the same options would be available to people in terms of they would have creation of affordable units within the development or a combination of in the development or off-site or payment and loo or a combination. So those, those still options remain with the new version. But to simplify things, instead of going in the cut and paste, the concept, concept would be the article would repeal what's in place today and then replace it with a new bylaw instead of trying to, you know, strike through and all that, simplify things. So, you know, that, that's the recommendation on there going forward. The one other piece that I will share, and Susan can talked about this a little bit, one of the things why the trust wanted to move back to where it was before was that that escalator provision, which ramped up from 10, 15 to 20%
Mm-hmm.
Was so close to what 40B is, which is at 25%. It was shifting where people were now looking at just doing a 40B, where previously the numbers weren't calling to go in that direction. And that's where they are calling now with that in place. In fact, we have a subdivision that, there were some reasons why it didn't get approved in the end, but off of Lawrence Street, not related to anything specifically what we're talking about. But that was going to be an open space subdivision, was going to be 21 units and there would be two affordables. Now, the developer's working to bring it back through as a 40B. And, you know, the concept plan is a much higher number, but it's certainly going to be higher than 21. It's probably going to be somewhere above. It's a straight out plan with no open space at all. So it's chop it up, no open space, not a compact development. And their reason when they came in earlier this year was, under the inclusionary bylaw, I would have to do four. So what was two went from two to four, so it doubled. So it didn't make sense economically where I could come in, waive the local bylaw requirements, the weather protection bylaw we have, all your, you know, it strips that away. So that's a concern that they raised, that they would like to see. And there are a couple of other sites in similar situations where they may be choosing the 40B door as opposed to the zoning bylaw door through, and these, the other ones are multifamily. It hasn't gelled yet, but I can tell you that we have, there has been people looking in the, in the multifamily district to do that, so.
I feel like maybe it was in a prior life, we had numbers and empirical evidence to prove this one out, so.
We, yeah, you, there, there was that, yes.
Yeah.
As you know, when you get to town meeting, motions rule and sometimes take the day.
And it was in a best intended, I mean, this is, this is a, you know, super well-intended addendum that that got passed, so I'm not knocking it, you know?
And if I could add, we do not have traditional subdivisions
Exactly.
Come through
Right.
Since this change.
Right.
So, and it really has pushed the envelope on, on, you know, we, I think what the trust is trying to be very mindful of is that certainly we want to increase our affordable housing production, but we want to try to do that while being mindful of the projects that are coming. And we don't want a project because it comes in as a 40B. We want whatever the best project is for the town.
For the town, right, exactly. Yeah, I mean, that's something that in general we should be when we're presenting a town meeting, you know, if we make this change. I mean, now we know that we're basically pushing people to do 40Bs, which is not what people generally want here, right? So, but we're motivating that behavior with the decisions that have been made.
True.
And that's what people need to know when they vote.
Right. Yeah, even though the intent was pay more affordable housing and less 40Bs
Having the reverse effect.
And one of the other things that Rich and I chatted about was, I think it might be helpful for this particular article and maybe some of the, and the housing choice articles is, at our last town meeting, we had some folks
Sorry, can we get a mic? I'm having a hard time here.
Oh.
Got a green light?
Working on it, Chris.
Hi, apologize for that.
No worries, thank you.
At our last town meeting, we had some folks who were genuinely concerned that there were no handouts that spoke directly to some of the capital expenses. So in our conversation and meeting when Rich and I met, we think that it may be very helpful. In the warrant, when it's mailed out to our residents, there's a letter in the front from the advisory chair, whoever it is at that particular year, kind of outlining some of the articles. It may be helpful with this housing choice that we're looking to have residents vote on. Chad, if you
The microphone's not working, switch.
Thanks.
Yeah.
If maybe we consider an article, I mean, a letter coming from you explaining some of what I think is really hard for folks that aren't knee-deep in the minutia to understand all of this. And then as far as the inclusionary zoning bylaw, there's often underneath the articles is a little box where the advisory board member explains what it is. And they, maybe we have a blurb under there that says, well, the intent to make this change was, you know, a great idea, this is what we're seeing and this is why we're bringing forward this new inclusionary zoning bylaw. I feel strongly that the more information we can get out to folks before
I agree.
They walk into that room and we're expecting them to vote on material that's often difficult for all of us that are involved in it to really get to the nitty-gritty of. I just think the more information we can provide them before they're coming into town meeting, the better.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk more about the document, I agree with you, Susan, 100%. But the feedback that I get from people when I kind of, you know, when I ask them why they don't come to town meeting, and, you know, maybe give them a little nudge, is, well, I didn't know, I didn't know what any of this meant. I got the warrant in the mail, it was a blurb, I have 100 other things to do, I have no idea what you're even talking about. So in general, the documentation could be a lot clearer and more in layman's terms and with the backup way before you get to pick up a handout off the table. So, I mean, just stuff we can figure out kind of internally, but that feedback I've received across the board for all topics, but certainly for the more complicated ones.
And it, it may be difficult to provide that for everything. We'd have warrants that were, you know, 60 pages long. But I think when you're speaking about material that is not discussed regularly, I think it's important to try to provide as much material as possible to help the residents understand it.
Yeah, or put it on the website so you don't have, you know, put a link wherever you can go to get it and save all that paper.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for that recommendation. It's a good one.
Next steps.
Okay, next steps.
Okay.
What are they?
So I know Tom and Marissa are going to give us their comments. That's one.
And
We need to revisit, we as a board need to look at that, the overlay district.
Correct.
And does that still, I mean, does that still make sense? We, we looked at that months ago. And, you know, after hearing feedback, which is very valued from, from some property owners downtown, we should look at that.
That could change the density number as well, once you include different properties.
So we would most likely make a corresponding change in terms of the district, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Could where they'll be, you know, get rid of Pondville, for example, or something, I don't know.
Right.
Figure something out, but yes.
Right.
Revisiting the area. So what I would suggest that we, we'll work through the comments with town council, we'll have a, a working, probably a much further along draft for the next meeting. So to get the inclusionary pretty much cleaned up, ready to go. I think that's pretty straightforward in terms of the language that needs to be done. You know, education, that's a different piece of it.
Yes, very much so.
And then in terms of the overlay district creation of it, what needs to go in, what doesn't need to go in, we can clean that up. And then, you know, may require a little bit more work to insert the district boundary a little bit, if you need a few more meetings to do that, but that's, that can be plugged in there, so, to give you time for the January. Because what I would like, would like to do was at least get this draft before the advisory board and really before, essentially before it gets submitted, so they're aware of it to get their feedback, because these are dramatic changes that are being proposed here.
Yes.
And
You said substantially correcting the inclusionary bylaw?
What's that?
You said
The inclusionary.
Right, what, what needs to change beyond what we have right now is the draft for that.
I saw some edits I got to make.
It looks like there's a lot of terms that maybe also need definitions here.
Which ones are in the inclusionary or the other?
In the inclusionary.
There are some
Lip?
Ah, the lip. Yeah.
I saw something else in here, too.
Yeah, go ahead, and Tom, I
And general comment about definitions, why are we referencing two different organizations, the former and the current? Is there no more DHCD in its EOHLC now? Why do we, why do we define the other one and keep mixing, talking about both of them?
Well, specifically, yeah.
We just got the definition of DHCD and throughout the text, you use DHCD.
I, I noticed that, too. I, I think we should, I think it was done because they originally referred to DHCD when it was DHCD, you know, at the time they issued a set of regulations. But I agree with you, I think we just use the new name
And I don't
And delete the old one.
Tom, if I Sorry.
Tom, if I could suggest, I think initially we should at least say formerly known as DHCD, because that's what folks are used to hearing, is the Department of Housing and Community Development, so.
It does say that, actually, in the definition.
It does, okay.
Yeah, the EO, EOHLC is Massachusetts Executive House of Housing and Livable Communities, DHCD Successor Agency.
Perfect.
So, yeah, it's a good call, but yep, it's there. But yeah, Eric, you're right, it, it, there is still cleanup in here on a few things.
There is, yes.
It's a draft.
And then you use the acronym MCMOD in the definition of MCMOD.
Use the definition.
Use the acronym in the definition of the term.
Yeah, that probably should not be there.
No, it's not going to be there. But that's what we need to work on.
Right. Right.
Come up with a name.
Right. All right. So other next steps. Eric, I would say why don't you send those, anything you see like that, send it to Rich.
Send it directly to me, yep.
Send it to Rich, and he can get over to, to Tom, Marissa. But what other next steps, Rich, that we have?
So we're gonna go through the comments of town council in terms of, go back through to say, okay, we need that definition, we'll remove what we don't need.
Right.
And keep what we need. We'll also revise some of the, some of those definitions to fit.
Yep.
Or we'll scrap them. There's some references, and to Eric's point, we're going to rename it. You had some names, Gary, you had some ideas?
Sure, I'll send them out.
Send the ideas.
Chat, Chippity did it.
Good, huh? No, we gotta do this quickly.
Norfolk.
Norfolk face.
We'll change, we'll change the, we'll customize or personalize the purpose section of it.
Okay.
And then, like I said, I got some things in the inclusionary I gotta clean up, I just noticed. Have, have the bylaw cleaned up, the new overlay district, and the inclusionary cleaned up for the meeting in January.
Okay.
It should be, in terms of structure, it should be good to go, in terms of move those forward, and then you can work on the district.
Yeah.
Overlay, district.
Do we still have help of agent?
That's no. I'm sorry, I was going to say, that's no problem for us, we can get you our comments while in advance of your meeting, and we'll even set up a few just ideas to consider, you know, in maybe a few variations that you, you might want to adopt, but timeframe's no time, no problem for us.
Okay. And then, and then we should also send this to Josh at MAPC.
He's listening.
He is listening, yes, beautiful. Thank you.
We will, yes. And then.
Because again, we want to make sure this is in alignment with our master plan as well.
And I will have to, I have rerunning the model, I don't think is, well, I'll find out. I gotta rerun the model, too, so, with the area changing.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Or we try, or we try to, like, I think you alluded to, we try to balance it. If we add something here, you take something away.
They still have to run the model?
I get it, I get it, but the impact should be minor.
You can play with it? No, they're not.
I wouldn't attempt to play with it.
Okay, that's fine.
But I'll get it done. Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll get the model run.
All right.
So make sure we comply. And then after, so we'll bring back to you in January, two drafts, send them with a, you know, like a cover letter, if you will, an explanation to advisory, hopefully have them maybe meet in February, so we can walk through this.
Mm-hmm.
So they understand, you know.
Are there any other zoning bylaw articles, I know that's probably your next one, is that we're proposing for spring?
You want some more?
This one's large.
Yeah, so hopefully the answer is no, there aren't any other ones.
Okay. Well, we talked, you did allude to one earlier in the meeting during a.
Yeah, we could do that.
That's a ti, that's super tiny.
We could do that in the spring, change the permit.
Change, change the permit timeframe from 12 months to 24.
Yeah.
To be in alignment with the house state.
We could do that.
I'm just throwing, are there any, is there anything else?
We may need to amend the floodplain bylaw.
Didn't we review that?
We, for the map change?
Yeah.
Because my understanding FEMA, WMEMA, they went, gone through the review process with the maps, and we might be getting, if we don't get word of it this month, like essentially December, that it won't need to be done in May, we may be able to do it in the fall.
All right.
But that's the one that's kind of hanging out there. I know that we do need to, the bylaw is fine, but we, we need to update the floodplain map based on what FEMA is adopt, you know, the changes that were made to the FEMA map. Other than that, I think this is.
This is the important one.
First and foremost, yeah.
The most important one.
Yeah.
Just asking the question.
No, it's a good question.
Because this one's very, very large, and it's going to take a lot of time and commitment. And I just want to see if there's anything else out there that.
It's something, you.
You'll be on the town floor for a few minutes.
You mentioned something about the other towns that did not pass.
Yeah.
Littleton?
Did not vote favorably.
Littleton.
Right.
Right, Tom?
Was the outcome or lessons learned on that, or what?
Tom, town council, he could speak, maybe get some insight.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually a really well-drafted bylaw. It's just, it's a different set of issues in Littleton in that they just approved, I think, over 1,000 units of housing in another district. And so it was kind of that combined with now trying to comply with the MBTA zoning that I think that, I think town meeting said, you know what, let's take a step back and let's think about this, and we still have time, which is, you know, part of it, we were doing it in the fall instead of waiting for the annuals. So I think it gives us a chance to think about it a little more and come back with something a little more tuned up. But it was very kind of topic-specific in Littleton, not a rejection of the MBTA housing because they're, they're a real leader in housing. It's, it was just timing, I think.
So no pitchforks? What happened? The state says you have to do this, and what if the town doesn't vote for it?
Well, then you're, yeah, so. Susan, just quickly, in Littleton, they have till December next year, because they're, they're commuter rail, aren't they?
Correct.
So they're jumping ahead, getting a jump on it. So it takes us out of some of the grants that are available to the town, which are some of the ones that we've used before, and they've added. So, let me just go quickly for you. So as of October, this past October, the new language is considered other discretionary grants, so they're taking into consideration housing choice, which is the community planning grant, it's the EEA grant, down, Massachusetts Downtown Initiative grant, which is something that we, we haven't done as of yet, but certainly grant opportunity that we could apply to us. Urban Agenda, I'm not sure what that grant is. Brownfields Redevelopment Fund, the site readiness, so these are contaminated site-type grants, which we have those. There is the land use planning grant, which we actually got for the work that we're doing currently with Southwood Site. And then land acquisitions grants, so for open space, EEA. And then the MVP program that we, we've applied for, for stormwater improvements, that kind of, those projects, that's another grant that if you're not compliant with. So I think kind of the, what we see is the, the route is the discretionary grants is where they're at right now. I can't predict the future, but.
Whatever happened with Middleborough, didn't they, they said they weren't, no one at Middleborough?
It's a suit.
It is, yeah. They were being sued for discrimination, right? Yeah.
Some of the meetings and conferences that we attend, you know, it's, it's, it appears anyway, and we won't know till sometime probably in June, but it appears there is going to be some pushback. Some towns may choose not to go forward, and like Rich said, we can't predict the future. We don't know what they may add to those lists of things that they'll hold back. But I don't think we're going to see this all neat and tidy and clean for a bit. Would you agree, Tom?
I would agree, yeah. I think it's got to shake out a bit.
Okay.
A good question, because that's, they expanded the list, it was, it was a smaller list originally. So we'll try to, if anything comes up, I'll let you know, but I think we're trying to focus for May, just housing choice.
Okay.
Really bylaws in terms of zoning. And that's the blueprint on the path forward, and that's it, that.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. What else do you have for town planner updates?
Well, we'll probably just, it's in, well, I was going, I don't have to talk about it, it's in the, it's in your packet.
We got the packet on the wastewater?
Yeah.
Is it the wastewater that you went through on the select board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you could re-watch it, if you have watched it already.
Yeah, we could, we watch that, re-watch that, or.
Re-watch it.
Watch the recording.
Yeah, watch the recording. There you go.
And we have the PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint, that's it.
Okay. Excellent, all right. Any other new business? We got our meetings coming up, so next meeting is January, and it's Zoom only.
Zoom only.
So just letting everyone know, January 9th, remote, Zoom. There was a conflict with the room or something.
Select.
Yes.
We can take them, I still think we can get there.
Select board's taking our room on our normally scheduled night, okay.
January 9th, Zoom only.
Where's Kevin? All right, that's fine, we'll be.
Mr. Chair will sign off if you're done with us?
I think we're all done, thank you very much, Tom and Marissa.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Happy holidays.
You, too.
You, too.
All right, I think then, so we got our meeting schedule on here, second Tuesday of the month, January's remote. And if there's no new business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You did have the letter for the.
Oh, yes, we do have this letter for the.
Metacomic Greenway?
Metacomic Greenway.
Letter of support.
I've left a copy for you to sign.
Yep.
Check.
I read it, yep, looks good. I'll take care of that. Anything else? So. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are out.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.